All right, the session has adjourned and I am now hereby calling this meeting of the Gulf Joint Union Elementary School District Board of Education to order. Would you all please join me in the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under our indivisible, limited and justice for all.
Thank you. And no action was taken on items in closed session. Item D, teleconference board protocol or meeting protocol.
Yes, thank you, thank you Board President Silva and for our, our community members that are joining us tonight. This session is being recorded, it is a teleconference session, it is a blended teleconference. As you can see, our, our board and leaders have joined at a location and public comment is, is really encouraged and we do that in alignment with board by law nine, three, two, three. Our public comments are limited to three minutes per agenda and three minutes per agenda item. The board will limit the total amount of public comment time for each agenda item to up to 20 minutes. With board consent, the board president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public comment. And regular board meetings, and this is an example of a regular board meeting, shall be adjourned by 10:30 PM. In our district, we do accept email public comment 24 hours prior to the board meeting. And that email public comment is limited to 450 words. We receive no email public comment for this board meeting. We do also have a teleconference public comment. And how we do that during the meeting is that as the meeting progresses, we're going to ask that community members participating tonight, please use the raised hand icon to make public comment for items on the agenda. We do not have our chat box open, we do not use our chat box during teleconference sessions during the board meeting. And a meeting facilitator, Mrs. Bach or Mrs. Heron will announce your name when it is your time to provide public comment. And we, you are muted, but you will, when you do unmute, we're going to ask that you state your name and indicate the agenda topic that you'll be commenting upon. We do have at times, and we've been pretty fortunate as a governance team, where there could be some connected connectivity challenges or because of how we're doing this, not all of our community members can see us, they may just be participating by phone. So for action items, the motion will be followed by a roll call vote. And secondly, if we do lose connectivity, and this is a bit different because we're all here right now, but you know, we try to maybe delay the meeting for five minutes before reconvening. And this is kind of a different because we're blended tonight. So, thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Shaw. Moving on to item E, recognition, and this is the Gulf COVID-19 vaccination recognition from the Service District, CSD Fire Department and Gulf Joint Union Elementary School District Health Services staff.
So I'm going to start with some background and then I'm going to look at Mrs. Bach and Mr. Doe because we will, we do have two panel members that are going to join us from the CSD. But let me go ahead and start, and then Mrs. Bach, you can let me know if, when we're ready on that. So we are just, it has been quite a school year. And on February 24th and March 26th, in the community of Galt, we were able to work together with the Kasimist Services District and provide employees and community members that were eligible to receive vaccines. And the vision, the vision of the Kasimist Services District, their efforts to collaborate with us along with, with other, say the school districts that participated. In my 40 years of education and, and living and working in this community, I will never forget what we were able to do and just what it took. And it took not only efforts with our Kasimist Service District and others, but we also have employees within our district that use their expertise and their commitment to help that event be a success. So with that, I can see on our projector here, we have two wonderful leaders representing the Kasimist Services District. And I believe we have Joshua Green, General Manager with the Kasimist Services District, and also Mr. Felipe Rodriguez, CSD Fire Chief. Welcome to our board meeting tonight, we are just honored that you are here and we, it is just means so much for, for us to see you and for you to be a part of starting our meeting tonight. Now, I think what I'd like to do is turn it to both of you for, for anything that you would like to share about truly this very powerful event that took place. Because following that event, we were able to start in-person learning in our school system and within this community. It was such a jumpstart of confidence and safety for us. It meant a lot to the children in this community and to our families and everyone. So thank you for being here tonight on Zoom.
Thank you. I think I will go ahead and kick this off. And first of all, President Silva, members of the board, again, my name's Joshua Green. I'm the General Manager for the Kasimist Community Services District. It's a pleasure to be here with you this evening. I just want to start by recognizing your staff and Dr. Shaw and everything that we, your team put together in order to put together these clinics, especially your, your Health Services staff. And I know that their names are in your board packet as individuals, and it really was a great team effort. And we just appreciate the partnership and putting together the, the community vaccine clinic. And it's great to hear this, that it got your students back to school. It's really what it was about, keeping our community safe. And so we wanted to be here tonight just to recognize the, the partnership and express our appreciation to you all for your leadership and supporting your staff and helping us put together this clinic, that you all have a role in that as well and helping those students get back to school through those clinics. So thank you for your leadership and thank you for allowing your staff to partner with us to make that happen. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to our Fire Chief, Felipe Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Good evening, President Silva, members of the board, Dr. Shower. Thanks for the invitation as stated by our General Manager. The thanks are to you. And if it wasn't for you, Doc Shower, and your, our partnership and your support for what we were trying to do, we would probably be delayed by several weeks on getting your children back to school and some of those families back to as much normalcy as possible. So thank you, thank you all who are on this call for your support and for all those who are listening. We're, we're here for you, you know, I'm your Fire Chief. I'm the Fire Chief here for the Kasimist Community Services District, covering both Galt and Elk Grove and everything in between. So together, we were able to do this. We were able to administer thousands of vaccines to many of the community members. As a matter of fact, we administered over 6,600 vaccine throughout both Elk Grove and Galt. And there at Liberty Ranch High School, I know that we were able to vaccinate many of the, of the school administrators and the educators. And that was one of the most important things is to provide some safety for the teachers and for the people who are going to be working behind the scenes and all of you who are on the front lines basically, and, and providing that for, for the children. And, and it was an honor for me to, to be there with our General Manager and seeing the support staff who were there from the Health Services and reflecting back to, you know, the, the mid 90s when, when my little girl went to Valley Oaks Elementary and thinking back to that time and how important it is for those families who are there and for the children to be in a safe environment and for the educators to be protected. And, and as we all know, we, we've, we've gone through a lot together, all of us here since last, in about February, early March. Over 3.1 million people have died across the world in, in that time, just over one year. So that 3.1 million families and loved ones who, you know, people who have been changed forever of those who they have lost. So, so every one of these vaccinations that, that we were able to administer together with you as our partner definitely helped someone and provided that for them. If I, if I may, just for a moment, share my screen here, you can see some of the beauty that, that I call a beauty, but it was, it's basically, it's a beautiful thing. And if hopefully you're able to see this now, but, but some of these are the pictures and of what happened during all this time. And this is a combination of all the work that was done in the various locations that we were able to administer vaccinations at and partner with many others. So hopefully, yes, you can see the screen.
Yes, yes, we can, thank you.
Now, so you see all of the great work in, in the car lines and, and the one-on-one and the volunteers and, and everyone from security there, you know, with Galt Joint Union Elementary School District and, and all the, everything that you all did there to make this possible at Liberty Ranch. I will forever be grateful for you and all that you've done. And just know that, that it was, those two days were, were days in history that forever. For those of you who were able to stop by and see what was going on, you'll remember it forever. And, and just looking at the people who are in those cars from the elderly that were there and even the administrators and, and all the educators, the, the, the look on their face of that relief of I can actually be protected now. And you know, you saved my life, I heard that many times and there's things like that. But to now be able to get back out to, to the, you know, back to normal life. And of course, we still wear masks and all, we're in public, so thank you for that. But hopefully all this comes to an end soon. And most definitely, as much as we might say, you know, this was a big thank you to the Kasimist Community Services District and all that we did, this is a thank you to you. And without you, we could not have done what we did. So big thank you to you from the bottom of my heart.
We do, thank you so much. We do want to recognize our, our Health Services Staff. And then I think perhaps our board would like to say a few things as well. I wanted to introduce to our audience and to, to, to Mr. Green and Mr., and to Chief Rodriguez. Donna Mayo Whitlock is our Director of Educational Services. And she has been tireless, relentless, just again, working with our Health Services Staff, working with Sacramento County Public Health to help us be in a, in a place that, that, you know, we can provide safe services at our schools. So Donna Mayo Whitlock, I would like, I would really be honored if you would introduce our Health Services Staff that we're recognizing tonight as well.
Excellent, I would like to, so I'll read off the names of our, of our health, the health staff. Starting with Rosa Perez, our Health Secretary. Anna Sally Gomez, our Health Assistant at Lake Canyon. Lori Burkett is our Health Assistant at Parasite School Readiness Center. Thank you to Sabrina Fry, our Health Assistant at McCaffrey. Cheryl Baglietta, Health Assistant at Vermini Greer Elementary. Isabel Valencia, our Health Assistant at Marengo Ranch. Rochelle, Rochelle Romero, Health Assistant at Valley Oaks Elementary. Katrina Ordaz, our Health Assistant at River Oaks. And two wonderful registered nurses that gave countless injections that day. Maria Carbonell, our District Registered Nurse. And Marty Cuevas Ortega, she's our retired district nurse and she's currently contracted with us and is helping us with contact tracing. So I just wanted to publicly thank our health employees for all of the work that they did that day. Thank you, Dr. Sheller.
Okay, and I'm going to turn this back to Board President Silva, anything that you would like to add or?
Comments?
Thanks, David. It was phenomenal to see the organization and just the, I mean, it was like a, it was organized and it was quick. I mean, you're in and out in 30, 35 minutes, it was, it was awesome to see. Definitely.
Yeah, I just wanted to add to that, you know, having, having been an operations NCO in the US Army, my observation, you know, the amount of logistics planning and the flawless execution of this, of this operation was, was just outstanding. Having done civil military exercises before and understanding the challenges, you know, when, when you've got two different organizations and two different languages and making that all work, it was just really impressive. I mean, from my observation, like I said, it was flawlessly, you know, executed. And I was just really amazed that, you know, all the effort that went into it. But what you guys were able to achieve, you know, as, as a joint operation from, from my experience was just amazing. So really impressed, thank you very much, everyone who put out the effort to make this happen.
Thank you, thank you for those words. And I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge our great Emergency Medical Services Division. We have a great Assistant Chief Rick Clark and his staff and the people behind the scenes who are doing the computer work and the organization of it so that it, so that it was flawless, as you mentioned. You know, that is what we felt as well. And, and I did have somebody ask me at one of the events, how are you able to organize this in such a smooth fashion? Where it's just, it's just so smooth and it's running so, you know, efficient? And my response was, you know, you know, we're the fire service, you know, this is a one or two acre parking lot. We're used to fighting 30,000 acre fires, this is like no big deal. And it was great work, the great work from behind the scenes that they did to put this all together. And all the volunteers and the coordination, we have Dr. Mackey, who's our Emergency Medical Services Director. And just a great partnership with everyone and it was amazing. And we did it multiple times and, and they all ran just as smooth as the one you, that you saw there. So thank you for that.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you so much for joining us tonight. It really means a lot to, to our school system. And again, something we'll, we'll forever be grateful for. And so, so grateful for the partnership that, that resulted in this for our children and community and for our staff, thank you so much.
Thank you very much, you guys have a wonderful rest of your meeting, thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
And moving on to item F, reports under LCAP Goal Three. Yeah, LCAP update?
Okay, so, and I know Mrs. Bach is going to pull up one slide at this point regarding the Local Control Accountability Plan. And our, our LCAP, also known as the LCAP, has served as our school district strategic plan. It's, it is a requirement, the districts have this, but we really use it as a plan that we want to implement. And I think that has been part of the secret of our success. We don't do plans just for compliance, we come up with plans, we take them through process and then we make things happen and we adjust along the way. And our board keeps us on our toes about this in terms of how things are going. And that was why, and you know, for the last, since we've started with the LCAP, and I don't know if there've been two or three cycles of LCAP in our, our board agenda, the reports are aligned to our LCAP goals. So that, that's, you know, what we've done. But if we're at a time right now where we're going to need to develop a new LCAP, a new LCAP. And with the, as we're working with our county office and Donna Mayo Whitlock's going to join me for this along with Claudia Del Toro Anguiano, is that it's not necessarily where you're looking to change everything that you've done, but there is guidance that they've given us. We've had four goals for quite some time and there's guidance that they've given us in terms of, you know, districts, four goals, maybe too many. You may need to look at two, they even said one, but I think, I think Donna Mayo Whitlock is saying, you know, I think we need two. So I, I think what I'd like to start with is say this, is that last February, we had a historic board meeting and study session and we had gone through data, we had Cal School Survey, all of those things. And we were really landing on areas about the whole learner, about equity, access and inclusion, about social emotional learning. And that work was not in vain because it served as well as being working through this pandemic. We never lost sight, I think, of some of the work that we started to do, we just never pulled that into an LCAP. We pulled it into the learning continuity and attendance plan, if you recall last fall. For those of you that were on the board or maybe you were observing as a community member, participating as a community member. But now we've got to do a full-blown LCAP and then our school plans need to be aligned with that as well. So we have been working with different committees. In fact, we rolled out our Cal School Survey again. And it's a bit different because it kind of homes in depending on the type of learning program the children participated in. Right now, we have more, we have more parents that feel, that have done it than last year. We actually have close to 700 parents who took it, that's about 100 more than last year right now. So again, I just want you to know, despite everything that's going on, the changes that people have gone through, our parents are taking the time to do the survey and we're really pleased with that. And we have students in grades five through eight that are taking it. And we also have staff from all of our schools that are taking it. Know that it is not required, parents can opt, have the children opt out. And, and we do have some families that do that as well, but this is the second time, just a bit different because of the changes in learning, in the learning program. We are, and again, you can see that the two goals that we have at this point, they're kind of lengthy and you know, we can work with that some. But the first goal is related to really engaging our learners, engaging them, getting them to connect to school with a focus on equity access and academic rigor. And really looking to make that happen no matter what the learning environment, whether they're at school, whether they're at home, or whether they're in an after-school program, or they're in the cafeteria eating. You know, how is it that we really support, connect with these children? When you have a district with over 500 employees, we all have that opportunity to connect with the children no matter what we do. And it's like, how, no matter what we do, how can we, how can we better do that? And really, when we talk about academic rigor, how do we ensure that that challenge is there for every child? The second goal is in the area of whole learner development. And this was something that we were really working on prior to the pandemic too. We know that learning is about the head, heart and hand. It's, it's not only academic, but for us to get children to really strive to get better, to grow in their learning. We have to really look at what brain research says and how it is that we look at motivation. How is it that we consider mental health factors? What is it that can inspire a child, a human being to be successful? To try, not give up, try, try again. And all of our board members, and I know a number of our staff received this book, Permission to Feel. And I'd like to touch on some partnerships that we're looking at right now. And Mark Brackett is a university or is a professor from Yale University and he's with the Center for Emotional Intelligence. I want to say a couple of years ago, Board President Silva was at a county evening presentation. And Mr. Chris Williams was sitting at our table from SCOE. And he was new at that point and his expertise is in the area of social emotional learning. And there were conversations that we had, that was the first time I had met him. Well, as we continued to learn about the work our county office is doing in this and we talked more because of what needs we had in the district, this is when we were introduced to the work of Mark Brackett. And just, you know, some of what, some of what, just going to just a field or table of contents here is they have skill sets, because that, that's a piece, how, you know, how do you, how do you work through social emotional learning, really, you know, what is it? Will they describe it through an acronym called Ruler? How is it that I recognize emotion, I understand emotion, L, how I label that emotion that I'm feeling? How is it that I express emotion? And how is it that I regulate emotion with my behavior in, in a, say, a setting? Whether I am a child or an adult. So that is some of the work that is exciting work that is, that Dr. Brackett is doing. Our county office right now had already been doing some work with our district. And so we are looking at a possible partnership with our county office and some school teams to work with Yale University in this area so that we can again, help to connect our children through social emotional learning and help them with their learning in general. And we also are looking at a program called Healthy Hearts and Minds Mentor Program with Artists and Residents Program. This may be something that we can try this summer to test it out. I mean, that's what's exciting, I've just planted a few seeds here, is that we're looking at some possibilities that we could highlight or try on a small scale in June and then roll it out on a larger scale during the year. These are some things, you know, that, that we're looking at. And then the third area has to do with the reach to the upside proposal. I'm going to come back to this because I'm going to ask our Director, Crystal, to talk to you more about what's evolving with that. Because we're hoping that we're going to have good news to share with you soon on that. And when I'm talking to you about these two goals, there are also metrics. I'm going to segue here to Donna Whitlock and to Cleo here, Claudia Del Toro Anguiano in just a minute. But what happens is when we are developing the goals, we're also then going to have to have actions. And then we have to be able to measure, to report how things are going. So there are metrics that we need to consider and there's some metrics that we've had to change because of what's happened in the state. So I just have given you kind of overview, the big idea are those two goals. I mean, that's why I did, we're kind of wanting you to hone in on those. And we want to turn this to you maybe for some comments and discussion around this for a few minutes, if that's okay. But I want to turn it to Donna and to Claudia, areas that you want to point out concerning the LCAP, kind of where we are and then the metrics piece, Cleo, because what, you know, what our district is doing that some other agents are doing as well.
Start, we are looking at these, at these two goals and we started, start with one goal. We begin social emotional learning, but we did meet with our side administrators. And, you know, we have spent the last year really deciding that this would be a focus and our administrators felt like, well, if it is that important, if we really want to make sure it's included on a day-to-day basis, it's threaded and integrated into what we do, it needs to stand alone because it'll hold ourselves and everyone more accountable. So that's why we did, we did separate it up. Goal one is, is a pretty lengthy goal, it's got a lot of actions. And I just want you to know, with each goal, we do need to come up with actions and a budget. But last year and throughout this year, we've been meeting with so many stakeholders and their committees and we've been getting their feedback about what direction we need to go, what are, what do they value? What would they like to see in the coming years far for their children in summer and then years ahead? And so those actions have kind of been fleshed out through the support of our, of our stakeholders. And then next step is we're going to be looking at the budget. Lois will do her magic and make sure that we have the funds we need to, to implement the actions. But every action needs to also have a metric because we do need to be able to measure our progress of whether we're successful. And a lot of our metrics do, they come from local measures, but they also have state measures. But I think she was going to touch upon some of the state measures that may be a little bit changed a little bit.
Yeah, and thank you, Donna. So due to many of the challenges pandemic has brought to every aspect of what we do with children, the State Board of Education took action to provide districts with flexibility in regards to the administration of some of these state assessments. And as you probably remember, the SPOC is something that all third through a grade students take in the spring. So because of the flexibility from the, the State Board of Education, the flexibility that is given to our district, our district has determined that the administration of these state assessments under the current pandemic. Our district has determined that the administration of these state assessments under the current pandemic conditions is not a viable option. So in the coming weeks, our district will administer the MAP test to all first to eighth grade students in the areas of reading and math. So the MAP results will be used as our district's academic indicator for this current year. Test results will be shared with parents before the school year is over, and data will be shared with you. So we just strongly felt that under the conditions, it was in the best interest of children to use the MAP as the academic indicator rather than administering the state. The same for LCAP. LCAP, as you know, is also a state required assessment. The LCAP is a little different because it falls under the, it falls under the state and federal law requirements. So there was no flexibility in having a different option for LCAP. So we have to give the LCAP to all of our Yale students. We have started that process. Do you know that it's quite an undertaking, because part of that assessment has to be done one-on-one? The state did extend the window, so we have until the end of June to complete the assessments. So we are hopeful that we'll do so, and we'll meet those timelines.
I wanted to add that, when you, when you do see our metrics, that we will have a new assessment as part of the metrics. But we will also be using as part of metrics the dashboard results, even though they aren't current of 2019. Because moving forward, we will want to make sure that we can continue to measure using those state assessments. And the last thing I just wanted to say is, you have the slide deck with selected slides in your board packet from our Sacramento County Office of Education. And I thought that they were the important ones that gave some, maybe some of our newer members, board members of the idea. I wanted to bring out, there was just the one, it was the elements of the LCAP development. And a lot of people, they look at the LCAP as a compliance document, but as Dr. Schaller started off the presentation, which is our strategic plan. But I just wanted to just touch upon it. It is a comprehensive strategic plan. It's accountability and compliance, of course, but it's also about meaningful stakeholder engagement. And I think that we work throughout the year on a monthly basis, getting stakeholder input and feedback. And our community has a lot of say in how we, we use our, your budget for our children.
So I think, I, I think what I, there may be questions that, that you have or comments around this, because we're looking at, in, in some ways, you could say the four goals that we currently have could fit within these two, if that makes sense. They're pretty, they're broad. And it can bring in facilities and other services. But I think that really, the important part is trying to hone in on those two goals. I mean, that's, that's why, again, it's like, if we're not on the right track, we need some direction, because that, right now, that's what we're looking to do. We're, we're, you know, don't pull this exactly to these words, but kind of in those two areas. But the other, so again, I think that's part of, of what, you know, I'd like to hear from you in terms of we're on the right track. And then secondly, is that what we're looking to do is just with timelines and things, is we're looking to post the draft, well, we're looking at this, and again, it depends on what can work for our board. And we're looking to do a physical study session on May 19th, if that works. And so before the, before the regular meeting, if we can do it at the May regular meeting, we will. And so I just want you to know that, but we just, we want to have more time around this with you. And but we do need to post the, what's called the draft LCAP. I think we're looking at May 27th to post it for public review, public feedback. So then we have more time between what you tell us and what the public tells us, to go back to work a bit. And then what happens is in June, we're looking at probably June 16th as, as a requirement that we have a public hearing about the LCAP and the budget. So just know, you know, we're trying, we're looking to keep this moving. It doesn't mean that we throw out what we're doing right now, but we are looking to look to look at through these two goals in some way, and then know that the school plans, that the school plans that will come to you in June also will be reorganized around two goals. If, unless, again, we get different direction from you. But this is kind of, like, we need to kind of get a sense from you, are we on the right track? And there may be other questions, given everything that we've shared with you. If I could just say one last thing, or I turn it back to our Board President here to see what, any comments from you on this? Is that, just to clarify again, from what our Director of Curriculum shared, is that we are not administering the state SBA question. And we think that it is more strategic with children to use our MAP assessment, given the type of learning we had this school year. Because what we'll get from that MAP assessment, we will get profiles of what they know and what they don't know. It's going to help us, not only for those children that are coming this summer, but for plans for the next school year. So that, I think, you know, our Director of Curriculum, your leadership to work with others to give MAP versus SBA is going to be a better decision for, for children that we're serving in our district. So I want to point that out, because, you know, that, that's not something that, you know, it doesn't mean the SBA is going to go away. Because our plan then would be, I think Cleo, then it gets, we, it would be on a spring 2022 then, is that what it would be given? But that is something that's important to bring up tonight, because we want our parents to understand that too. We haven't rolled that out. We wanted to talk to you first about that.
So any questions or comments from the rest of the board?
Seems very logical with the map testing. They've been taking it, pay or familiar with it, it's, it's easier.
I think it'll be a better gauge of where they're at than that's back.
And it's just more important to know where they're at.
Yes, you can fill in the gaps better.
We all concurrently have that.
Well, and then there's also a good comparison, even previous MAP as well.
Very good. And then I think again, that our plan would be with MAP to be assessed in the fall. So again, it's just, I think, again, someday at the state level, it's going to look more MAP-like than it will like SBA. So it's going to get there. Thank you. Thank you for your leadership to get it this far too, but again, we just, we, we want to be able to communicate this to parents as well, so thank you for that input.
And then just from my perspective, I think, you know, especially goal two is, is definitely right on track with, with, with you know, with what we see is, you know, is, is necessary for, for our students. So, yeah, it'll be interesting to see, you know, what, what type of, what type of metrics are developed in collaboration on this. But, but I think, I at least, I think we're on the right track with, with goal two especially.
Yeah, I think with their students coming back, we all know where I stand with social emotional learning. You know, and I'm going to go back to the mini wellness centers that are elementary schools, like we have at McCaffrey.
Feedback, and this won't be the only time either, so, yeah. All right, and know that last February, Dr. Leslie Koinor and joined our board, who were board members at the time, to review the Cal Schools survey data. She is going to return, we're going to work to schedule that. It may or may not be at a study session, it could be at a regular board meeting, I'm just, you know, working that through. And she'll be also be working with our administrative team, because, you know, we, we have parents and staff and students that have taken the time to do it, and so we're going to, we're going to work with that data too, and that I think will influence and how our LCAP looks as well. Donna, anything else that you need from our board to hear, or? Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to item G then, Routine Matters, New Business. Anything you'd like to point out, Dr. Schauer?
I would, there are two things.
Especially item E.
Yes, yes, I'd like to highlight our retiree. And then we do have a donation that I'd kind of like to highlight for the board as well. So, and again, in our consent calendar, we have a number of employees who are retiring. And all of them are teachers except one, and I'll point that out. And I'd like to read their names and also point out the years of service in our district.
Yeah, please do.
So here we go. Catherine Burnett, 25 years, from Marengo Ranch. Lynn Byerly, 31 years, at Vernon E. Greer. Kelly Ernst, teacher, McCaffrey Middle School, 29 years. Lynn Flutie, 33 years, teacher at Marengo Ranch. Judith Hunt is a cafeteria cashier for over eight years at Lake Canyon. Lori Jackson, 21 years, Marengo Ranch. Deb Kenneweg, 23 years, Lake Canyon Elementary School as a teacher. Kathy Loesch, teacher, 25 years, Valley Oaks. Amy Madison, teacher, nine years, Vernon E. Greer. The rest of these employees are teachers as well. Barbara Matherley, Valley Oaks, 23 years. Michael Michalonis, 17 years, Lake Canyon. Cherylyn Raquel, Cher Raquel, 21 years, at Lake Canyon. Robin Richmond, 19 years, as a teacher at Lake Canyon. Valerie Siemens, 22 years, at Lake Canyon. Kathy Setford, 24 years, teacher at Greer. Nancy Severin, 25 years, music teacher, River Oaks Elementary School. Barbara Woods, 30 years, currently at Valley Oaks, teacher. Mary Wardlaw, 15 years, currently at Valley Oaks. So this, this is a large number of employees, again, the majority are teachers, one classified staff member. And just many years of service altogether there, and their contributions will make a lasting difference. We are planning to have a Zoom retirement recognition event on Tuesday, June 1st at 3:30. So just wanted to share that with you. And we have something special that we'd like to say to our retirees. And then something special that they'll be able to drive by and pick up during the week. So those are our retirees that I wanted to recognize. And then I'll move on to our, our donation. And the Quatul and Lazaro Cueva of NLJ Trader Tro- Traders Clothing Wholesalers donated to Valley Oaks Elementary School. 12 work vests valued at $97.42 for site use. So we really appreciate that donation.
That's awesome. Are they a local business, or?
I'm not sure if anyone, does anyone know here, they're a local business? Are they on C Street? Yeah, I know right where they're at. On the corner of C Street and Lincoln, I think. NLJ Traders Clothing.
Also, yes, thank you so much to, to the teachers there, well, and the cafeteria cashier that are retiring. I mean, that's many, many years of experience. I know, you know, several of these teachers personally, having, having taught my children, and how awesome they are. Other teachers I've met, you know, obviously, you know, throughout my time in this district, that I also knew would be awesome. And it's just, it's just amazing. You know, just, I don't know, I'm not that quick at math, but I think there's a couple hundred years worth of experience. Yeah, that's just amazing, you know, and it also says a lot about the dedication that we have in this district. I think that's, that's something that I'm extremely proud of. Again, thank you, thank you so much.
Yes, I would like to add, I know my children have been taught by several of those teachers that were listed, and they will be greatly missed in the district.
Any other comment? If not, then do I have a motion to approve item 202.187, the consent calendar?
I'll make the motion to approve the consent calendar.
Thank you, Wes. Do I have a second? Thank you, Gracie.
Thank you, I have a motion from Tracy, or excuse me, from Wesley Cagle to approve item number 202187. Seconded by Grace Molson, Tom Silva. Tracy Skinner.
Hi.
Katie Reboy.
Hi.
Thank you, the motion passes 5-0.
Okay, next item up on the agenda then is item 202.189. And that is board consideration of approval of the Gulf Joint Union Elementary School District 2019-2020 Measure K Bond Audit Report by Christie White and Associates.
Thank you. Yes, our auditors, Christie White and Associates, have completed our 1920 Measure K Bond Audit for board approval tonight. And we have Michael Ash, CPA with the firm, that is here to answer any questions. They really looked at expenditures for Measure K for River Oaks and Marengo Ranch projects for 1920. And Michael is here to go over our audit and answer any questions. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Lois. Good evening. Thank you for having me here again. I, I was just here last month. That month sure flew by, it seems like yesterday. So tonight I'm here to present, just really quickly, on the Measure K Bond for the year ended June 30th, 2020. It's a very positive report again, so because Measure K was a prop, is a Prop 39 bond. The bond has to undergo financial and performance audits each year from when the first series was issued, all the way until all those bond proceeds are spent. So I believe this is the fourth or fifth year of audit. And the financial audit is pretty similar to what we do for the district audit, only it's just focused on the Measure K bond. So that's making sure that the transactions are recorded accurately in the correct period. Making sure the balances at the year end are correct. So we had an unmodified opinion, that's the best opinion that you can have. And that means that, in our opinion, the Measure K Bond Building Fund was fairly stated in all material respects as of June 30th, 2020. So that's the financial piece. The performance audit piece is a little bit more exciting compared to the normal audit. And what the performance audit does, says is, looking at expenditures and making sure that they're allowable per the ballot language. So what we do is we pick a sample of expenditures, and in 1920, you had quite, it was a very active year within the bond program. I think you had over $7 million in expenditures, we looked at over 5 million of them. And what that is doing is just taking the support for those expenditures, the invoices, all the backup, and just making sure that those expenditures are allowable under the ballot language. And again, with the performance audit, unmodified opinion, no findings, no issues. So all in all, a very positive report. I just wanted to thank Lois and her team, again, for their, for their help with this one. I want to thank Tracy Stinson, our audit contact, and then we're looking forward to working with Brenda, who's going to be our new audit contact going forward. And then finally, Dr. Schauer, I just wanted to congratulate you on your retirement. I, I heard that last month, and I knew I was coming back, so I didn't say anything about it. But congratulations, we've really enjoyed working with you. Last, last time I talked about the culture at the district, and one of the most important internal controls is tone at the top. And without a great tone at the top, that, that culture just wouldn't be possible. So really want to thank you and congratulate you and wish you the best.
Thank you so much. That was so kind of you. Thank you.
And that's it. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions? Page 17 was great to me, so.
Yeah, I like to thank the, the volunteers on here.
Prior to being a board member.
Our citizens.
About seven or eight names there?
Yeah, could you, yeah, Lois, could you go ahead and read those off to us then?
Our Citizens Oversight Committee, yes, we had Lori St. Clair, who's a member with grandchildren in the district. Melissa Pruitt, CPA, organization member and parent of a child in the district. Anne Wood, parent of a child in the district, same with Jim St. Clair, a parent. Bonnie Rodriguez, she represented the business organization and also parent in the district. Clarissa Cappy, parent. And we had the last, when this was, just last year, we had two vacant seats. We, we did previously have members that were in those seats, but our senior citizen organization and our bona fide but our senior citizen organization and our bona fide taxpayer organization members both stepped down last year.
Yeah, and again, thank you very much to those folks. I under, you know, I, I know from personal experience, that's a, you know, that's a, that's a commitment of their personal time and effort. You know, I know we walked through a lot of sites to look at, you know, the construction that was going on. We looked at a lot of audits and reports like this. And so, yes, yeah, thank you for pointing that out, Wes, because, yeah, those folks have definitely put in their time, and the results have been awesome. So that's, that's just excellent. Any other, any other questions or comment? All right. If not, then do I have a motion to approve item two zero two point one eight nine?
I'll motion to approve two points, or excuse me, two zero two point one eight nine.
All right, thank you, Tracy. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Casey.
Thank you, I have a motion from Tracy Skinner to approve item number two zero two, or excuse me, two zero two one eight nine, seconded by Kate Peaver Boy, Tom Silva.
Aye.
Wesley Kagle.
Aye.
Grace Molson.
Aye.
Thank you, the motion passes five zero. Thank you so much, Michael.
You're welcome, thank you, good evening, and hopefully I'll see you next year in person.
Okay, now the next item on the agenda is item two zero two point one nine zero. And that is board consideration of approval of memorandum of understanding between Sheldon Business Park Limited and the Gulf Joint Union Elementary School District regarding Summerfield Development Project.
Thank you, I, I'm going to start, and then I'm going to segue to our Director of Business Services. And I just wanted to check if, I know that we have our Facilities Attorney, Addison Covert, that will be joining us as well. And I just wanted to say that, you know, there is, there is some promising development, exciting development on the horizon in the community of Gulf. And, you know, just, we want to be able to prepare for what that can mean for future additional families and children in our school system as well. And this is the first of three agreements that we have to bring to you at this point. And our Director of Business Services, Lois Yott, has worked tirelessly on this. And because it's been amazing, we're three developers, and this is the first one. So Lois Yott, I'm going to turn this to you.
Sure. So Summerfield Development is projected to be right off North Twin Cities. Approximately two hundred and four residential units will be built out there. What this agreement does is it allows for some additional funding beyond the state developer mandated fee that developers would pay. It is the additional sixty cents per square foot homes that were built. And it would be additional revenue the district would be able to use to house and serve, to educate the students that may potentially come from these new homes.
I'm not sure, also, Mr. Covert, here may be some things that you would like to add as our board is preparing for questions from the board, anything that you would like to add?
That's a dangerous question to ask a lawyer. But I will say this, I think the district staff has done an excellent job in these agreements in maintaining maximum flexibility for the school district to make sure the school district can respond to a growing environment. And by that, I mean enrollment is going in different directions at different times in the history of the school district. But at the very same time, Galt is in a corridor of growth, as close as it is to Sacramento and Elk Grove, and as close as it is to the Bay Area. And so the school district really does need to be responsive and capable of adjusting to change conditions over time. So again, these agreements have been crafted with the idea in mind that maximum flexibility for the district going forward would be a primary goal. And these three agreements, all three respect, reflect that.
Thank you.
You bet.
You know, I do have a question, and it's kind of, hopefully it's for general knowledge, so it just takes more than me. Once developer fees are, are collected, what's, what's, what, what is the status of those fees? Like, how long can we retain them? You know, what are the limitations on what they can be spent on? So that I think, and I think that's probably just for good general knowledge, for, for, like I said, me and the public. But like, so like, for, yeah, so I mean, can you kind of walk us through that initially? Like, how long do we have to collect the fees? And then, you know, how long can we retain them? And what can we do?
So I could, I'll start with how we spend developer fees, or how we can, according to law. For any school improvements or for school, new school construction to house new students. Most recently, we used some developer fees to build the track at McCaffrey because we did not put a track in there when that school was built. That is one of our, that was one, a school that we did receive developer fees for rebuilding that school. Also, what you can do is, when you're upgrading portables, is if you have a fair amount of portables on a school campus, you can use your developer fees to upgrade those portables. Because really theoretically, you should have a school building, a permanent building. And so when you do, so for example, say, some of the new students come in from these developments, maybe we don't have enough students yet to build a new school. We can use these funds to add additional portables on the campuses or upgrade portables that we currently have. We do, there is, you have to, there's a certain percentage of your developer fees that you have to spend over time. And we definitely have not been in that situation to where we haven't spent them. You could potentially have to pay them back if you are not spending them in that timeline. Allison, is that timeline within five years, I believe, if you're a certain percentage that you're not spending your developer fees?
That's right, and it's, and, and there's a little bit of an additional element to it. It's not necessary to actually spend the developer fees within five years. It's sufficient if you have budgeted projects in mind to be spending that developer fee for, even if it takes more than the five-year term. But it's not uncommon for school districts to have far less developer fees than they needed. So the refund of developer fees is fairly uncommon.
Yeah, we, we have not been in that situation.
All right.
And we, we currently have a balance of just under a million dollars in our developer fee account right now.
Do we have projects? I'm assuming we have a list of projects?
We do, you'll, you'll see tonight that with the, one of the proposals for the board tonight is the S and B James Construction Project for Greer. Potentially, we'll probably use a small portion of the developer fees for what we're going to do to the portables here. And I'll talk a little bit about, a little bit about that, but a small portion.
Well, thank you very much, I think that's, I hope, helped explain it to me, all right? All right, any other questions? Okay, if not, then I'll move to approve the item two zero two point one nine zero. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, thank you, Wes.
Thank you, I have a motion from Tom Silva to approve item number two zero two one nine zero, seconded by Wes Kagle, Tracy Skinner.
Aye.
Grace Molson.
Aye.
Casey Reboy.
Aye.
Thank you, the motion passes five zero.
Okay, next item is two zero two point one nine one, board consideration of approval of memorandum of understanding between Arcadia Development Company and the Gulf Joint Union Elementary School District regarding Fairway Oaks Development Project.
All right, so Fairway Oaks Development is just west of ninety-nine and Dry Creek. There's a proposal of a hundred and sixty-two units that would be built out in that development. This agreement is very similar to the agreement you just approved. It would also bring in sixty cents additional revenue for per square foot for homes built there. This Fairway Oaks, what is a little different in this agreement is that they are in the JPA, the city meeting facility of District Number One, that we share with the high school. And so they would pay, would continue to pay their JPA fees in addition to the sixty cents.
Oh, so they pay both?
They, if, if this agreement is approved, the sixty cents is above the state mandated developer fees, or in this case, above their JPA fees that they pay.
Oh, okay, okay.
So they don't pay both the developer fees and the JPA, but they would pay this additional sixty cents.
Oh, okay, okay, that makes sense. All right, well, thank you for clarifying that. Any other questions? Okay, then, do I have a motion to approve item two zero two point one nine one?
I'll make a motion to approve two zero two point one nine one.
Thank you, Gracie, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you, I have a motion from Grace Molson to approve item number two zero two one nine one, seconded by Tracy Skinner, Tom Silva.
Aye.
Wesley Kagle.
Aye.
Casey Reboy.
Aye.
Thank you, the motion passes five zero.
All right, next item on the agenda is two zero two point one nine two. Board consideration of approval of memorandum of understanding between Elliot Holmes Incorporated and the Gulf Joint Union Elementary School District regarding Summerhorn Development Project.
This is the Summerhorn Ranch project, it's Summerhorn and Bosso. This is the largest development at four hundred and twenty-nine units proposed. This development also has a projected new school in the future. I would like to draw your attention to the changes that we have talked about, the edits, modifications that the board has talked about tonight in paragraph seven. That gives the district the greatest flexibility as time, does not commit a timeline for as to when we'd be able to build a new school there. We are committed to work with the landowner, Elliot, to build a new school there when we have the student enrollment to do that. So it does not tie us to a timeline. Or approving this tonight does not say for sure, set in stone, that six years from now we would be able to build a new school. And we're hoping that growth continues, we grow involved, these developments flourish, maybe even others, so that we would be able to, we'd be in a situation where we could build a new school at the Summerhorn Ranch development.
Could you go over just the changes to, or the necessity, or I guess the benefits of the changes to paragraph seven?
Yes, so, sure. Addison, would you, would you want to go over paragraph seven?
I'm happy to do that, sure, be my pleasure. Paragraph seven has language that talks about how the school site would be treated going forward. This project was large enough that when the city established the plan for the project, they required that a school site be proposed to be included inside the development project. But the city doesn't make decisions on when or if schools are to be built. That's a school board decision to make, based upon a lot of factors that you all are familiar with. So the agreement maintains flexibility. The school district may exercise the option to acquire the property and go forward with state money and local money and build a school out there in the development project. Or the school district could make the decision not to ever build a development, a, a, a school site within this project and accommodate the students from this project in other school district facilities. That flexibility is built into the agreement. Right now, there are a couple of triggers. One of the trigger that would happen would be the decision to actually go forward and enter into a purchase agreement. And that is connected to the start of significant growth within the project. And then for a period of two years, there's a, an opportunity to wait to see, in the school district's perspective, whether that growth is in fact going forward. Then the school district may elect to enter into an actual purchase agreement for the site. There would be no absolute commitment to close the escrow on the purchase agreement, however, until certain events and circumstances and requirements were met during the period of time in which the school district was in escrow under that purchase agreement. So there are a whole lot of factors and flexibility that are built into the school agreement that provide the school district and the school board in particular with the maximum flexibility to meet changing conditions over time and decide whether to build a school or to not build a school within the project. And you'll, I'm sure you're aware of the fact that there's already an, an existing undeveloped development project in the school district's boundaries already, that has a school site reserved for purchase within its boundaries. And so the school district has several options going forward here to accommodate new growth in the future. And again, this agreement has been drafted in a way in which the maximum flexibility, allowing the school board to come up with the best method to address that growth, could in fact happen.
Thank you, that was an excellent explanation. Any other question? You bet.
I appreciate the flexibility.
That's awesome. Yeah, yes, the flexibility was definitely awesome, Addison, thank you. Okay, if not, then. Do I have a motion to approve item two zero two point one nine two? And that would be approving the agreement with Elliot Holmes with the new language modifying paragraph seven as discussed by the board tonight.
Excuse me, Board President.
Excuse me, Mr. Silva, we do have a request for public comment.
I'm sorry, on this, on this item?
Yes, well, I believe it is. I don't have any way around it.
I'm sorry, let's hold that motion, and please, if we have public comment, yes, I'd love to hear it.
Hello, Chad, are you there?
Hi, I'm here, are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you so much. Good evening, board members, this is Chad Roberts, on behalf of Elliot Holmes. Appreciate the opportunity to comment this evening. And before I get into my comments, I, I do want to just take a moment to sincerely thank Karen, Lois, Addison, and their team for all of their efforts on this agreement to date. It's been a collaborative process for months now, and, and we really appreciate all of their efforts. Appreciated Addison's explanation there to you. And, and for the sake of clarity, and admittedly, we have been exchanging drafts of this agreement leading right up to this meeting in section seven. I'm hoping to get some clarification on, on precise language in section seven. So I, I hate to belabor this and, and take any more time. I just want to make sure that, that there's a shared understanding of, of what language the board is approving this evening. From my perspective, there was, there was a, a language exchange to modify section seven at three thirty-two PM this afternoon. I think that is what Addison is alluding to, but I think it'd be helpful for all of our benefit to clarify.
Yeah, and I can clarify that if you wouldn't mind. That absolutely is the version that is in front of the board this evening. The board has seen that already in a closed session environment, and now has that same contract, proposed contract in front of them now that reflects that final revision that was discussed in the middle of the day-to-day.
Thank you so much.
You bet.
Just out of curiosity, is that something we could share on the screen then, so everybody else can see it? Or is that, is that possible?
I think.
Clarify my point if that helps.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
And if you're still able to hear me, I apologize to jump back in. I failed to mention Price Walker from Elliot Holmes is also on the line this evening and available for any questions you might have. And, and I know he wants to extend his, his sincere appreciation to Karen, Lois, and Addison as well.
No, we appreciate you being here, and we appreciate you working with us. Yeah, I'd just rather put it up on the screen than have to read this myself. Especially through that.
Yeah, we'll get there, and, and.
But if all else fails, I will read it.
Yes, and, and Mr. Price Walker, thank you, thank you so much for, for joining us this evening as well. And we, we really appreciate all of the, the efforts from, from Elliot Holmes as well to get us to this point. And it looks like Mrs. Fogg is pulling at this, the, the agreement at this time. And it's section or paragraph seven. I just wanted to check with Addison Covert, Addison, can you, can you see that, what Qui has brought up on the screen?
Yes, I do. Yes, I do. It, uh, if, if she could scroll down ever so slightly, that might help me. I don't know if others are having that same problem. That's fine.
So when you folks are ready, I mean, just let us know if that is indeed the language that, uh.
Yes. Sorry, I, I hesitated to back, to, to jump back in. I, pardon my, uh, my third intrusion here. That, that is the, um, version that we expected to be included. So really appreciate you taking the time to, uh, to clarify.
No problem. Thank you very much. Okay, um, and if that's the case, is there any other requests for public comment on this item?
Mrs. Fox? No, there's none. Thank you. I thank you, Mrs. Fox, for being there.
Thank you very much for, for touching that. And thank you all for clarifying that. So again, in regards to item two zero two point one nine two, do I have a motion approving the agreement with Elliot Holmes with the new language modifying paragraph seven as discussed by the board tonight?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Wes. Thank you, Wes. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Casey?
Thank you. I have a motion from Wesley Kable to approve item number two zero two one nine two with an amendment to paragraph seven, seconded by Tracy Skinner. Tom Silva?
Aye.
Grace Molson?
Aye.
Casey Ripley?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes five zero.
Can you use something?
But she called, I'm sorry.
Oh, Casey. No, it needs to be.
Casey's seconded.
Casey seconded, and I'll say aye.
I could call my.
That was, that was probably my bad. I didn't probably negotiate. From Casey.
Tracy.
Tracy.
So hopefully, we got that clarified now.
Thank you, Addison and Dana Scott, of course, for all your help and.
You bet. Have a good meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you, uh, Price Walker and also, um, Chad.
Chad Roberts.
Chad Roberts. Thank you so much for joining us tonight.
Yeah, thank you very much. Now, next item on the agenda is item two zero two point one nine three, and that is board consideration of approval to continue the four-day TK through eight AMPM blended learning model, June fourth, twenty twenty-one. Dr. Shaw.
All right, um, we are, uh, what I've done is I've taken the background, that is in the board packet, and pulled that into a presentation to, um, present to you this evening. And what the, what the background includes is a brief recap of what happened at our last meeting on April fifteenth was, which was the special board meeting. Um, we'll move into some of the critical factors about the learning model. Um, we want to talk to you about student impact and then the recommendation, um, itself. And I want to start by saying, and I think you, you've, you've heard and, and already seen things tonight that speak to, um, what our staff, our families, parents, and children are doing as we have, um, you know, begun, uh, coming back through our in-person blended model. And just incredible efforts to put into action all the planning and, and make it work. And our, the cooperation of our families when it comes to daily pre-screening. Um, if someone's forgotten a mask, even for mom or dad to walk back to their car to get one, it's just the cooperation is so appreciated by everyone. And I think, you know, we just, uh, we've got some really good momentum going. And, you know, with our, our, because some of the services district, I think, you know, their work with us and others just helped to jumpstart that too. So just want to start that, that it's just, uh, there's so much to be proud of right now, uh, in, in the work. And, but again, it's that aspect of, of what do we, what do we do now? You know, what do we do now? Do we stay the course with our AMPM model? Um, or again, um, you know, is it something different that we do? And I prepared a recommendation around that. So going to the first, um, slide with just a brief recap here is that when we had met on April fifteenth, we were just getting started and coming off of spring break. And, uh, again, I had shared with the board with you at that time that it is our intent to fully transition back, um, to a traditional learning model when conditions permit. And we never dreamed that it would take so long to get to where we are right now. We continue to be in the red tier. Thank goodness we got to the red tier. Thank goodness we got the vaccinations, but we never dreamed it would take this long. And, um, you know, it just looks like things are getting better, which is so, so good, good to see. Um, I did make a recommendation at that meeting, um, that we continue with our AMPM blended learning model through the last day of school and then transition to the full-day summer program. The board approved it that night to move forward with the June program, but tabled, um, a decision about continuing the blended model at that time and to give us more time, um, to see how things are going and bring information to you. So that, we had touched on, um, on the next slide about learning factors. How's it go? Next slide. Thank you. We had touched that, um, you know, for in our district, there, you know, there are differences between districts and communities right now. Eighty-four percent of our children, um, are coming to the in-person model with sixteen percent participating in distance learning. Um, if we were to look at a modified traditional model, a more normal model, um, we are, we have challenges with transportation, and we will talk to you more about that tonight to make that work. Um, we do also been trying very hard to sustain the current student-teacher assignments. And that's another area that we'll touch on tonight more concretely with you, so you can see just how, what that looks like. Um, we do know that if we were to look at a different model for the last month of school, that there would be staffing and childcare needs considerations, and we will talk to you more about that. We are in the third trimester. We are still in the red tier. And by golly, we got those two vaccinations done with many employees in our district that, that wanted to do it. So those are some factors that we had brought up before. And so again, what we're, what we're going to do now is we're going to touch on some of these areas with greater information than what we brought to you at that special meeting. And so our directors, we're going to rotate, um, based on the topic area. And then we'll have time for, um, there could be some public comments tonight and more discussion around it. So again, I'm going to turn this to our Director of Educational Services, Donna Whitlock, to get us going about health and safety. Next slide, please. Thank you.
There you go. I think Dr. Shaward had already just mentioned on just how grateful we are to staff and to families with, um, following so many of our health, so many of the health and safety guidelines that we've had to put in place. And so if we've come back onto campus within this blended AMPM model, we do, and we keep in mind that we have multiple gates to reduce crowds when they're coming onto campus. We're doing our daily screenings. We've hired additional nursing staff, actually two LBN nurses, to help with contact tracing and staffing at the schools. And daily, our contact tracer, our registered nurse, Marty Clarvis Ortega, is in communication with South County Public Health. So what I wanted to do was just, you know, highlight some of the health and safety data. But, um, the state and the county, when we look in, in our school system, are three basic scenarios that we have to really, really focus on. I start my day every day, you know, in contact with our LBN and our nurses and, um, make sure that, that, uh, we're looking at these three scenarios. So scenario one, our staffer students that may have symptoms, like symptoms, um, COVID symptoms. And so since coming back onto campus, our nurse, our contacts, contact traces, seven staff, they've been symptomatic. So far, all of these, that the seven staffers, I think now it's about ten since I created this, but they've all turned out to be flu and allergies or headaches. But, um, only about seven, um, that she's done the contact tracing. Like students, we've had multiple cases. The one thing I wanted to point out here is that we are just forever just grateful to families because generally in, in a school, we send many students home during the day. You know, the children come to school with runny noses, a cough, or a fever. And I'll tell you what, we've had multiple cases, but the majority of them have all been caught through the daily health screenings, which parents, you know, complete before their children come to school, or they've called in. So I, I really couldn't put a number to that because I only track the, um, the next two scenarios for students. But if you notice, there, they, the schools, all schools reported only sending home between one and two children per week after they've come onto campus. And I just, that's probably more monumental to me than everyone else, but I just wanted to point that out. Scenario two is when an individual comes into close contact with another individual that's, uh, been confirmed by with COVID nineteen. And we've, uh, both of these stars, the staffs and students, we've had a few exposures. All of them have been outside of the, outside of the workplace or school. We've had no exposures on campus. And with the new guidance, we do not send out communication letters if they have been exposed off-campus. Um, in these cases, one staff member and seven students did quarantine. They, they were excluded for ten days. And the other, uh, kudo and shout out to families, the parents and staff, especially our family, they immediately went to get COVID testing. We can't require it. We can only recommend it, and they've been amazing. They have just really followed through on that. And then the last one is scenario three, confirmed COVID nineteen case infection at schools. We had zero staff members, zero students that have been on campus. I do need to point out, we've had two students that have been positive since we've come back, but they were not on campus. There was no exposure. So there was no closure and there was no communication. But, uh, that's, to me, that's just incredible, if I look like a knock on wood, but, you know, and that's with all those safety measures in place. Fifty percent of our children on campus in the morning, only fifty percent in the afternoon. Um, and small, you know, one staff member at each school trying to, uh, monitor that when the kids get there.
I, just in terms of the logistics of how this works, um, you know, prior to this, it was, you know, it's, it's been amazing. Weekends have been amazing for quite some time because of just managing things that come up or possible cases. But I know that our Director of Educational Services, um, you know, we really emphasize learning in this district, but every morning, um, she's hitting it running regard, regarding this, um, working with our registered nurses, working with our principals, because we know that we've got to be very proactive on this to keep our classrooms open, keep things going. And the cooperation of our staff, again, going back to what, what Donna Whitlock has shared, it does take cooperation. Um, and again, you know, we're tired. We're tired of face coverings and pre-screening and, you know, laser thermometers and all of that. But you know what? We've got these kids coming back, and it's, you know, we're getting there. So I just, I, I just want to say, it's just that those are some of the logistics behind the scenes every day. We just really appreciate everyone's effort, um, you know, to help make it work. And, you know, again, a, a school district, I mean, our major mission is about learning. And when we are looking to, um, make recommendations about, uh, the model for learning, um, for the last month of school, we're looking at learning and learning impact. So I'm going to transition this to our Director of Curriculum in the next slide. Oh, I'm sorry.
Just confirm a couple of things. So before spring break, when we were having a certain teacher, we were having other certain groups coming to school, we had COVID nineteen cases where, uh, classrooms had to be shut down and had to go home and quarantine for some days, correct?
We did in small groups.
Yeah.
I believe we had three or four throughout the, you know, from between November and, uh, March. We did have several. Some of it was, yeah, we did confirm several with cohorts.
And so since we've come back with the, the, all the measures we've had, we have not had one class have to shut down or.
Absolutely. Thank you. I could have started out with that, with that one. Is that we have had no, 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 um, classroom closures thus far. Thank you.
We'll go to the learning slide next. Mrs. Fox?
Thank you, Pauline. So we shared some of this information with you the last time we met. We talked about how with the current AMPM model, um, it is providing two and a half hours of uninterrupted time. Most teachers don't have that, uh, in a typical year because we have recess, because we have press. So it's really hard to have that block of time without any type of interruption. Right now, all of our teachers have that two and a half hours of uninterrupted time with smaller class sizes. So, and I apologize for that. I should say giving students. Because of the uninterrupted time and the smaller class size, children are able to meet and exceed the learning targets for the day or the week. Wanted to point out also that the current model is reintroducing children to the classroom norms, even though they have been with us since last March. Children have to get used to what it means to be in a classroom, what it means to raise your hand, to, uh, wait time, what it means to, uh, work with others, although they've done it again virtually. Not quite the same when we have them in front of them. And because the, uh, class size is a lot smaller, teachers are able to provide immediate feedback. If you are a coach, if your children have been in any sport, we all know, right? You provide immediate feedback on the spot. Otherwise, it's unlikely that the children, that the students, the, the team will do what you are expecting them to do. So without immediate feedback, everything just slows down a bit. Because we have, again, that smaller class size, we are able to provide on-the-spot feedback, which means we can move along fast. So the current model supports the following, our unique opportunity again to accelerate learning for the reasons that I just shared, the opportunity to re-engage children in social setting, and then the opportunity to strengthen relationships, not just with their teacher, but with their peers. So at this time, the AMPM model is providing the best opportunity to provide children what they need, when they need. I'm not sure how else to say it, except that, that immediate feedback and the ability to meet or exceed learning targets is truly making a difference for the kids.
All right. So when we move beyond learning, we're going to look at some services also, um, in terms of what it's looking like with AMPM, beginning with childcare, um, and then we'll move on to transportation.
This was quite an undertaking, um, in an AMPM model. And Jennifer Collier, our extended learning supervisor, she coordinated, um, with the, just with the various different programs. We have, uh, we have over a hundred and seventy, a hundred and seventy-nine children, um, in childcare participating and for our staff who are, you know, back on that AMPM all day, but the children are in the morning, possibly, or the afternoon. Yes, we're providing that for seventy-one, um, children of our staff. Something to really point out is, since the coordination, we have ACES, which is our after-school program, SURE, which is the city of Gulf we've worked with, Champions, which is a private, um, entity that's over at Marango Ranch. Between these, though, there is at least four different schedules that we're working with. We have a before-school, and Champions is just like a, um, a drop-in. It's an in, and it's at various times, Champions. We have eight to twelve-thirty. Some children leaving then at twelve-thirty to go to school. Then we have kids that are getting out, um, getting out of class at, at ten forty. So we have a ten forty to three o'clock slot, and then we have a three to six, um, um, timeline too. So a lot of coordinating of schedules with our staff. But as you can tell, and it's the staffing also, the staffing with instructional assistance. And I know the last couple of days, Jennifer Collier has been subbing in one of the homework clubs because we have had, you know, so many, had needed so many extra new staff members. But it's working out. It's working out smoothly, but, uh. and that, that was quite an undertaking.
And then beyond the childcare, we have transportation services and, thinking that that was the next slide, maybe I made a mistake on that slide. Okay, here we go. Alright, and so Lois Yaut's going to clarify some information about transportation.
So following county health guidelines, we are still at one student per seat. Students need to be at least three feet apart, social distance on the bus. So with that, um, we're very limited to how many students we can transport. With the AMPM model, we maximize the amount of students, actually double, because we can transport, we're transporting a hundred and twenty-four students in the AM, get those kids home mid-day, and then turn around and do it again. PM, we pick up another hundred and fourteen kids, get them to school and take them home. So we are actually able to transport two hundred and thirty-eight students with the AMPM model. Moving back to a traditional model, when students are all on one schedule, following these current guidelines until these guidelines change would reduce transportation by half. So at this time, we're really, AMPM is maximizing the amount of students that need transportation to, to get them to school. Actually, it's, it, pre-COVID, we were transporting three hundred and sixty students a day. We're transporting two hundred and thirty-eight, so not too bad, better than we had expected with this model.
Any questions on that so far?
No, I'm curious, because I don't remember being mentioned, um, from our last board meeting. Is transportation being offered for our summer program?
Yes, we will be providing transportation for summer program.
So, I mean, we're anticipating a large turnout for summer. I mean, that seems to be kind of the trend. Are we going to be able to transport them because it will be back to a normal schedule of the eight to two?
Well, if the guidelines in June when we start are still one per seat, then yes, it, transportation will be reduced. We're looking at about, right now, it varies anywhere from about a hundred and fifty to two hundred and sixty students, um, per school, attending summer.
But it kind of hinges on if those guidelines change in June.
So we transfer, if, yes, if we are still one student per seat in June, then everybody coming to school eight to two, you know, transportation will be reduced, yes.
It just also depends on, you know, the total number of children that participate. And we'll talk about that too, because we, we certainly would like to see everybody come back. We don't think we're going to get that, but if it's like fifty to sixty percent.
I had a question on the childcare, um, slide. You know, how is it working with the social distancing requirements during those programs? Like, you know, I see Valley Oaks has forty-five.
Well, for ACES, you see the numbers are a little bit higher. They're in multiple rooms, they're in stable cohorts, they have assigned, all of these have assigned seating where they stay in their seats. And they're, they're physically distanced at six feet still currently. But for example, like I said, Valley, even Greer, probably McCaffrey, they have several rooms that they use. And then you can see that, um, the employee childcare, it's still pretty low, but actually that's kind of spread out throughout the day. But all of them do have their assigned seating, for example, when they're in here and the tables are, you can walk in and you'll see a name and that child will be sitting there.
So, oh, I'm sorry.
My question is, how many days left are in school, how many school days are left? Twenty-six, actual school days?
Sounds about right, yeah.
Because I was just looking for, right? I was just kind of looking, and I think I came up with twenty-six days. So Mondays are stay-home days. So now, now we're cutting it down to twenty-one? Because you, because you got the thirty-first, May thirty-first is the day off, correct? So you're down, you're, so we're literally looking at like twenty days, twenty-one days. Yeah, because, I mean, last time I was, last special board meeting, I was really questioning this and seeing this, and then looking at the, how many days are left in the school year? And I go over this stuff, so it's making more sense and getting more, more information.
So. And again, you're, you're really working to emphasize the academics and, and it's like, what our director cricket was saying is maximize just catch-up growth and more. Um, and again, that last week of school, um, you know, you want it to be as impactful for learning as possible, but it's also very special too. So it's a bit different that last week of schools, you know, in terms of maximizing, you know, what happens. And what, what we've done tonight that we didn't do last time is, and all of our principals are so proud of, of, of the hard work and accomplishments of staff or in what students are doing and families. We've, we've asked two of our principals tonight to talk to you, and Mrs. Bach has gone to the next slide, to touch on those four areas about just a couple of minutes from both of them, um, around safety, learning, well-being and services. We've asked one elementary and one middle school administrator to speak to you tonight. We're going to start with Jennifer Porter, um, to just give you some snapshots, um, you know, of what it's looking like at one of our elementary schools. And thank you, Mrs. Porter, for, uh, being a part of our presentation tonight.
You're very welcome, Karen. Good evening, everyone. I want to start by saying that we're absolutely thrilled that our students are finally back in school. And we've wrapped up our eighteenth day of in-person learning with our blended model, and it's gone really well. I do want to thank our entire Marengo Ranch school community because without all of their efforts and hard work, it wouldn't be the successful transition that we've had. So our teachers and our staff and our families have all done an amazing job to make this work. I'll touch on the four areas and give you an idea of what it looks like with the blended model. For safety, we all have, um, different points of access and exits from the campuses. And the students are entering those points and exiting those points depending upon their grade levels. And when they come into the school grounds, uh, whether they're in the AM group or the PM group, they are pre-screened by their families at home, and, and this is going very well. Families are used to doing the online app for the screening, or they do the little half-sheet-paper screening, and the kids check in with our fabulous yard supervisors at the gates. And then they have designated pathways where they head into the classrooms. The classrooms are all set up following the safety guidelines that have been established. And we have sanitation services that happen in between the AM and PM groups. So once the kids leave, we come in and do a thorough cleaning on those classrooms. When it comes to services and support, you've already heard a little bit about the childcare, um, programs that we have on campus. Our SOAR program has been great. We have two classrooms that are used during the day, and then the cafeteria is used at the end of the school day. We have, um, student meals that are also provided for both the AM and PM groups. And the, uh, teachers, when they take roll in the morning, will order lunches or supper meals, and then those are all delivered to the classrooms, and then they're, um, taken home by the students where they can eat them when they wake up home for the day, or, um, they can eat them the next day if they have the PM group. When it comes to, um, the, the well-being of the students, one of the, um, things that I love seeing every morning or every afternoon are the kids are greeted by a yard supervisor at each gate, and then they walk to their classrooms where they're greeted again by their classroom teachers. And it's just really nice to hear these welcomes, um, when kids walk into, um, the classrooms and onto the campuses. It's a, it's a neat part of the day. The class sizes really provide opportunities for the kids to talk and get to know each other. I mean, they knew each other on Zoom, but they hadn't been able to form friendships, which we're now seeing in our classrooms. Kids are feeling safe and engaged in these kind of small supportive communities in their classrooms. And, um, we're adding in social, emotional learning and, uh, activities throughout that, um, two-and-a-half-hour block. We also incorporate some time to play and laugh during the school day. So with all these pieces in place, uh, we get to the learning part of it. And with that two-and-a-half hours of time with only half of the students in the classroom, we're able to cover a lot of academic ground. We're able to check in and interact with each child every single day. We are able to determine what students are learning and what they're struggling with. We can identify what they need and then provide the necessary support. The teachers are really doing a fabulous job of fostering some positive relationships in the classroom, and it really is leading to healthy academic growth and learning. And one of the really positive things that we're seeing as well is that the students who were very, um, challenged with getting any of their work done when they were at home in their distance learning are now completing their assignments and being successful in the classroom.
Any, any questions for, for Mrs. Porter? Okay.
Thank you very much, though.
And then we, we also have a middle school principal, Ron Raymer. And Ron Raymer would, uh, he would like you to, uh, just again, key in on, on some of the areas to provide our board with, uh, the reality at middle school right now, given a blended model, AMPM.
Alright, good evening, everybody. Jennifer did a fabulous job, and a lot of the things I would say would be the same as what Jennifer said, especially when it comes to things like cleaning and food service and how we take roll and, um, food count, lunch count and all that. So I won't repeat that, but, um, just when you go back and think about what a middle schooler had to get through this year, you know, they left a year ago as sixth graders. They didn't get orientation, they didn't get shadow days. And then all of a sudden, they're coming to this big giant new school as seventh graders, never maybe even setting foot on campus before. And so it was, um, it was quite, it was quite a shock for some of them, but they, they really seemed to be acclimating well to middle school. And, um, I think that is due to the incredible staff we have at McCaffrey and the support we've, we have received from the district. You know, the kids, the kids were very nervous, um, they were anxious. They were incredibly quiet for middle school. I've never, could even imagine how quiet the kids would be coming back from something like this pandemic and getting back on to school, but they're also excited. And over the four weeks, I've noticed, um, a pretty good change in them. They're, they're coming out of their shell, so to speak, and they're feeling more confident about being on a middle school campus as seventh graders, um, and in the eighth graders are, they're, they're just feeling good about being a middle schooler. So that's great to see. Couple of things about our, our campus, maybe a little different, or maybe Jennifer did not mention. We do have small cohorts like everybody else, sixteen or less. Um, the teachers have done a fabulous job as, um, the support staff have also helped in this in creating a safe, uh, inviting learning environment that allows a teacher to teach at a level and for the students to learn at a level that is much accelerated, as Cleo talked about, compared to a typical class of thirty-two. Because every class is sixteen or less, and some are quite a few less than sixteen. This, the environment that the, that we've created at McCaffrey, um, there's just no tension on campus. It's, it's pretty amazing. We've been in school for four weeks. We have not had one child sent to the office, um, for anything, um, behavior-wise, not one in four weeks. The, the kids are, they seem happy, they're incredibly polite, um, they're incredibly friendly. They follow the rules to the T. They all wear their masks and they do, if it slips below their nose, they're always pulling it up. And they're just very cognizant of what the safety protocols are, and they follow them. They, they, they each go through a gate like Jennifer was talking about. We have six teams, three in seventh grade and three in eighth, and we have six gates that they go through. So they go through as a team, um, they stay in their cohorts. Um, we, we closely monitor their social and emotional needs with our counselor, Lori Beiser. She, she does some things on a monthly basis, a check-in, and she has about two hundred, two, two hundred and fifty to three hundred kids that check in with her. And then we, the teachers are also doing some things with journaling and stuff that Jennifer Collier has worked with our staff on to kind of keep a gauge on their social, emotional, issues that they might have, or if they're anxious about anything. The teachers, if they become aware of it, they let our counselor Lori Beiser know right away, and she is on it very, very quick. The, the staff consensus is that this has been a very good transition. Parents have been incredible, getting their kids to school and making things work so we can get through this, uh, school year. At the end of the two hours, believe it or not, the kids seem very tired. So they're, 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 they're getting better and they're getting, um, stronger at being in school, but they go to two one-hour classes, and at the end, they're pretty, pretty darn tired. So, um, we're working on that and trying to build up that resiliency a little bit more as we end the school year here. So I think that's about all I have to say for you, unless you have some particular questions. Thank you for your time.
Alright, and so we'll just, just the, uh, what we're going to finish up with, as Kai goes to the next slide, is I'm going to ask our, our directors to come back with some additional, there's some additional information that we didn't share last time that we will now. So Kai, you can go to the very next slide, and we'll start again with, um, class size and schedules and the learning impact, coming back to that, uh, Director of Curriculum, Cleo.
So under the current model, we're able to conduct precise diagnosis of learner needs, social, emotional and academic. Give an example of what would, that would look like in the classroom. When you have a smaller class size and you have uninterrupted time, you can very quickly see that maybe Tom came in unusually quiet. You might be able to see that the picture that Tracy drew is giving you an indication that maybe she needs to talk to someone. So you can quickly assess the needs of, of all types. If you just think of academic needs, I can use the example, you know, if, if the children are working with fractions, teachers always, of course, walk around, look at student work, try to identify what steps are missing. Something that we're able to do right now, because of the smaller class size, is that teachers could actually analyze the types of errors. So if a child is getting the wrong answer for fractions, it's much easier and a much faster process for a teacher to think. Okay, it's, I can see that the child doesn't understand the connection between the wholes to the part. If you know that as a teacher, you can so quickly provide immediate, uh, corrections, immediate support so that the child can go on. Not that teachers don't do that on a daily basis on a regular school, but this is done to more children faster than we were able to do before. So if you think of, um, practice and immediate feedback, it's with practice and immediate feedback that teams win, right? So we're able to do that because of the current model. So really, we are at a critical point. We either continue to provide the academic acceleration that we have talked about for a while, continue to provide the just-in-time support and immediate feedback, or, uh, we prepare for five months of potential catch-up growth. So that, I mean, it really boils down to that.
With this unique year that we've had on the next slide, um, you know, we. With this new year that we've had on the next slide, um you know, we, we knew um starting this year with the pandemic uh emergency that there were a number of families that did not want their children to return in person. And we thought that maybe that was going to be it at that point, and then when we um we were able to return and then A M P M blended model, we had a significant number of children where families wanted to continue um distance learning. And so uh Donna Whitlock, if you could just again, be pointified for the board, just get a sense for how we matched students to teachers um that specifically teach distance learning and those that are teachers that are working in the classroom for in-person and then coming to students.
Grand total, grand total is five hundred and fifty-seven, and I want to apologize for my math at the top, I'm not sure what happened. But in the Glee one point O, that's those parents from the very beginning, they had their students from August, it's a hundred and five teachers, hundred and thirteen children have been, you know, from the beginning of the year. So there was, there were teachers that are, you know, both of the, you know, teachers and the students are off campus, and then Glee two point O kicked in and and um we have, do have six teachers, three of those are middle school teachers with very old classes. And it's a hundred and eighty-six children in Glee two point O. But what I want to draw your attention to, which is going to be for continuity of teacher and student assignments, when we came to that second round of students, two hundred and fifty, we had two hundred and fifty-four additional students that, and seventy-five teachers who are teaching in the A M P M model have the cameras installed in their classroom and are doing live concurrent instruction. So that, I mean, to have found enough teachers for two hundred and fifty-four children would have been, for Cleo, putting in the human resources would have been incredibly, it wouldn't be possible. So, you know, the continuity of student-teacher assignments is that, you know, we know that when, if we were to go back to that full-day traditional model, it would be extremely difficult for a teacher to maintain um that live concurrent instruction for the entire school day. And if she couldn't, then they would have to also be preparing extra work for, you know, for asynchronous time. So, it's a good number of students, five hundred and fifty-seven, that we've been able to, you know, um match with teachers and, and programs in this uh A M P M model.
Okay, and so then again, Mrs. uh Yon had shared about transportation and we have a visual, just again, to, to share with you. Um and the visual, you do have your packet, you have some technical difficulty.
Just to summarize and to conclude for transportation, this is just a visual for you, we have twenty-six seats on a bus. And we are leaving um two seats behind the driver open, so twenty-four students to a bus right now. Um without this A M P M model, it would, it'd be reduced by at least a hundred students that we would not be able to get to, get to school right now, students that are being successful and it would, you know, they would not be able to get to school.
We hope that that repair, that, that will change soon, but it hasn't, you know, it hasn't, hasn't yet, and then again, I know uh this Whitlock, you had clarified about childcare, um and you won't look through the slide up on our, our projection here, but um could you just talk about just the impact of maybe moving to a different model of childcare?
Well, in the A M P M model, we do have two hundred and fifty um students who have their own set schedules, we have staff members that um are working around those schedules, we have four different programs going. And um to move from that schedule that we have the A M P M in the last twenty-one, twenty-two days of school would really require that we start from scratch, or we're going to have to look at a whole new schedule because the childcare needs are still going to be there. Maybe a few different families and also staff members, but uh yeah, it, it would result in a lot of different scheduling issues and needs for both families and staff.
So what I, what I'd like to do is just, just end with this is um and, and then clarify the recommendation is that um it last fall, we were required to prepare a continuity um of learning and attendance plan with, with our board. And continuity was the thrust of that, continuity in terms of learning. But I'd say continuity also for us has been about how to sustain as best as we could these relationships that are built with teachers and students. And uh we, we have worked, whether it been um you know, through meetings with different stakeholders, to working with our principals, to working with our unions, doing everything we could to just continue the learning, no matter the conditions. But now with the model that we have, um how to keep children connected with staff um that, that are currently serving them. And we've shown you things to think about that if we were to move away from this model for one month or less of school, um it's very difficult to sustain the relationships that are there. It's very difficult to promise also um that current teachers would continue to be assigned to their students, that services that we're able to provide right now that um would, whether it be childcare or other things, that it would look the same way. And we, we would need to reset that, and we, we can do anything, we just, we just can't do everything. And staff will do it, but, but I just, it, it's difficult to make that happen and for such a, for such a short amount of time. The other, the last thing I'll share is this, is that we did meet with our district advisory committee, our district English learner advisory committee, our parent advisory committee. These are committees that are composed of teachers, of classified staff, of parents. Um and the theme, as we talked about, the A M P M model was this, that we all, I mean, parents, the staff and others, you know, want children to be, for families that want that, want them to be back in person as much as we can, we, they want that, but there was also a theme like there's been enough change right now, and, and again, adding another change for one month of school is just very difficult to handle. The last testimonial I'll give is that with our, our parent advisory committee for special education, there was a parent who shared um that she had, uh one of her children was um received special services and uh was part of a cohort, and her other child at the same school and was a gen- a general ed student. And she said, you know, I don't, it is a hassle for me to go back and forth on the schedule to make it work. But she said, it's just, I don't, I don't want another change right now, I'd rather keep it stable for my children because I know it's only for a month. So, I know that we have heard public comment uh from, from some um community members that you know, they, they want five days, they want us to move to a more normal uh schedule. But I'm also hearing from parents that don't see it that way as well. And, and again, I try to look at all of that when I'm coming up with a, a recommendation. What would be best for the children that we serve? And that's what drove the recommendation that I brought to you, it was weighing all of that, and again, it's just when children are connected to adults right now, um whether it be distance learning or finally in-person, to break that right now for some, I'm, I'm very concerned about that, so that, that was why I brought the recommendation to you that um we would look at um continuing the blended A M P M model to the last day of school. And um as our staff and our principals have shared, I don't know, hope, you know, maybe we'll never have to look at a model at, at what we've lived through a pandemic before. But there's also such strength to what's happening right now with everything that children have been through, that we're working with smaller numbers of children, but they're getting to school and they're getting to school more than twice a week, they're getting to school four times a week. Our high school district um is also a, a four-day model at this point, they are not going full day. Monday um is, is a planning day, and I think that they do some testing with children too. So those were just some of the factors, so again, that was my recommendation, that was pretty much the basis. We wanted, uh I wanted to um provide you now because we've had more time with additional information um about that recommendation, and I, I just may turn it back to you and we may have some public comment also.
Yeah, I was gonna ask the rest of the board, would you rather discuss this first or would you rather hear a public comment?
I'd rather hear the public comment.
Okay, so yes, um what uh, do we have, first of all, do we have requests for public comment, or so how many?
Yes, we have two.
Okay.
Our first public comment request is from Sarah Murray.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, hi guys, how's everybody doing? Um, I um just wanted to uh thank everybody for all their hard work during this time, and I do hope next school year we can change uh things back to normal as much as possible anyway. Um, and I will teach, I'm just glad to have these kids in my class, even though it's not full days. Um I will teach however you want me to teach for the rest of the year. I do want to say however, that some of the things being mentioned or talked about um is, I don't know what the word is, kind of frustrating maybe. Um, the kids that are consistently coming to school are doing wonderful. They are progressing, they are, like Cleo said earlier, they're getting my help, I can identify issues quicker. Um, stuff like that is absolutely true. Um, however, they're still failing in many different areas, um they're not attending Mondays, I have maybe half my kids on Monday. Um they're not attending P E Zooms, they're not attending music Zooms. Um, we still have a lot of disconnect about school and the, and what it takes to be in school in this type of position. Um we have kids that no longer have internet since the um hotspots went away. Um so we have kids that strictly can't get on, period, to any Zoom. Um, we have families that have gone back to work because so many things have been lifted, so we have kids being home alone even more so than they were before, which hinders the help they get and/or the responsibility, you know, put on them as being home alone. Um, just so many things like that, I don't think, sure, everything looks good on paper, but living it and seeing it day by day, it's, it's totally different scenario. Um, I am, like I said before, super excited to have them physically with me, no matter if it's for two hours or six hours. But there's still a huge disconnect about the A M P M model and whatnot and what they're doing outside of school, especially in the P M model. Oh my lord, these kids wake up at eleven-thirty and come to school, they do not do anything else, most of these kids. Um, but anyways, so I just think, um I, I know I see it, I know fellow teachers and staff see it, so that's just something to keep in mind, but um again, I will teach any which way, as long as I can physically have my kids, thanks.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Sarah, our next public comment is from Martha Vialma.
Hello, good evening, um I do want to thank you Karen and board for all of your hard work and all of the things that you pointed out that um I very much agree with. Um I work very closely with a teacher that is doing both in-person learning and um remote via the camera setup in her room. And um the kids are actually doing very well in both of the classrooms that I'm working in. We are finally at the point where the kids have uh been, we've been able to administer different tests and kind of see where they need the help, what interventions we need to give them, and are working on those things to get them caught up. So, any type of change right now would be detrimental to those kids that are finally at the point where they're getting that help that they need and will hopefully be coming to summer school and receive, continuing to receive that help. Um, switching things up right now, and possibly having to even close um school or change schedules for a little bit while the school and classrooms, teachers prep um would leave very little time for actual on-time, full-time, even if that were being considered. Um, so I thank you very much for putting the kid safety and wellbeing first because there are many teachers and staff, support staff, that see that as the only way to go right now for these few weeks left of school. Um, I am very happy to be finally helping these kids that I have been seeing struggling, you know, now I can work with them one-on-one because the classroom is a small size, I'm able to give them that help that they need and hopefully get them a little closer to grade level or to the level that they need to be at so that they have a little jumpstart on next year. Uh me personally, as a parent, I have seen my kids doing excellent. Um I commend Mr. Raymer and the McCaffrey staff, they have been amazing at getting things working, just as have the elementary school in Valley Oaks where I work. The staff, the teachers, the support staff, everything has been flowing great, and I think that we're finally at a point where everything is going well. To make any change to that right now would just, I'd throw everything upside down and be really crazy. So, I really thank you for your recommendation.
Thank you, Maria. That's all for public comment, Mr. Self.
Okay, that's it for public comment, so then uh board?
Um, I bring some, something that Sarah brought up, like the hotspots. What is the issue with the hotspot?
I don't know, ours.
Yeah, I, I'll have to follow up with Mr. Delson, principal at, at Valley Oaks. Um, we still have hotspots, I mean, they're still active, um I know, we just um took a few more to Valley Oaks um a couple of weeks ago, so we'll follow up with Ms. Marie and find out what students they are, I don't know if it's just a tech issue with the hotspot or.
Did they change company?
It was Verizon before, right?
We have probably three different companies that we use, yes. Yeah, the first one we started with, uh I think it was Verizon, it wasn't the best service, so we bought more from a different company. Um, so we'll follow up.
Thanks, and then, and then the other thing she talked, talk about the kids being home alone, well, we've got childcare. Why, i- is there, there's just a lack of information getting to parents that the, that the parent doesn't know, we don't, you know, hey, we offer childcare so we could kids need to be home alone?
If you have to say that, and especially at Valley Oaks, there is a high need and there is limited space for childcare. But there's also communication that, you know, parents know, I'm, I'm not aware of, of the waiting list, I'll have to check on the waiting list stuff, so I will follow up on that.
Um, just, just one.
Mr. Self, we have one more request for public comment.
All right, if you guys like to hear that, okay, yeah, please go ahead.
Thank you, our public comment is from Christie Ward.
Good evening, um I'm sorry, I don't, I just kind of listened tonight. Um, so I just have kind of some questions that I hope I can get kind of some feedback on. Um, so, hmm, I just want to say that like some people don't return to school, like I, I think it was eighty-six to sixteen or uh whatever the number was, eighty-four to sixteen. And that's because of a variety of reasons, like I have a, a gal, uh my ne- niece, I'm so sorry. Um, in Elk Grove, um she didn't return because it's Zoom in a room, and neither did her um uh brother because it's Zoom in a room, so they went to one day of school and then came home, so you can see a difference with the Galt district, people really enjoy obviously the teacher-children interaction, the teacher-children, student interaction, that makes a difference uh with those numbers. I know some parents that pulled kids because they couldn't handle the mask, like the children got such severe anxiety, so they pulled their children because of it. I know some refused to follow the guidelines or didn't wish to put their children through this, so there's things to look at like that, not just numbers sometimes. Um, I was curious, why with transportation, why aren't the other buses being utilized? I see the bus yard during pickup or drop-off, and I see fifteen to twenty buses just sitting there, are they out of service? Is there no one to drive the buses for transportation needs? Like what is the issue with this exactly? And can COVID relief funds be utilized to gain bus shuttle support or something? Just curious on this, because I didn't get an answer yet. And like I see the problem now with going back with only a few weeks left, I see that. But we could have returned sooner, we could have returned weeks ago sooner for four days, full days, or three full days, or whatever, something sooner, or five full days. I mean, it wasn't even discussed during a special board meeting on Easter break. Like this should be the topic at every single board meeting. This is the most important thing right now for our children. And I just, it boggled my mind still. And I just would like maybe a little feedback on some of the things I just mentioned. I'm gonna just kind of glance and see if I have anything else. Oh dear. Okay, some of the things like that right now they're able to get some social settings and strengthen relationships. I feel like that's maybe just assuming that they don't have relationships or social settings as far as children. My children have relationship with other students and children outside of the classroom setting. We make sure they engage for their mental wellbeing, this is so important. And so I think some of those things are just assumptions as instead of, I can't think of the word. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is block anymore?
No.
Okay, so question?
Yeah, and I know normally like we don't have a question and answer portion, but I do think to clarify, I know we covered last board meeting that we are short drivers. And we do, I think that's kind of something that's a trend throughout the area. There's a lot of districts that are short drivers. And something I think Wes mentioned earlier is that like SAC City isn't even offering transportation anymore except for special ed. And so I think Galt has done a really great job of offering that because we don't have to offer that to everyone and we do try to factor that in. So I think that that's, you know, awesome job on that. This is like a really hard issue. It's, I don't think any of us want to be here at this point in the school year or, you know, at any point during the school year. I kind of go back and forth with it. I, you know, they say, oh, there's only 21 days and you're like, yeah, that's not that long to have this much change happen. And then the principal said that we've been doing this for 18 days. And it's like, wow, we've done all this in 18 days, you know, we still have 21 and it would actually be 26 because we would have Mondays possibly. And so I kind of go back and forth with it. And I don't want to take away from all the hard work that everyone's done because I know between the teachers and the families, you know, everyone is doing their part. You know, my daughter had the sniffles, it was just allergies. I kept her home for three days because I was like, gotta make sure it's just allergies, you know. In a pre-COVID world, she just would have went to school with a rough nose. So I mean, I think everyone's doing their part, I just, I wish we could find a way to get more time in the classroom because me, just speaking as a parent right now, when my kids were distance learning, I feel like they had more instruction time than with the AMPM. And being a substitute in the past, I can't even imagine how the teachers are doing the AMPM. You know, it's just, it's a hard one. I don't know.
No.
I mean, it's just, it's just a hard one, I don't.
You know, and I think, you know, it's important to note, we're all parents. We've all had to, you know, walk through this for the last year. And we've all had different challenges. And I've seen the impact it's had on my children. I definitely see the benefits of being back in the AMPM schedule, at least for, for both my, well, actually for all my kids. They're much better off on campus. There's no doubt about that. And that's, that's a trade-off for me, I'm willing to make.
Yes.
That two and a half hours a day for me, for my kids is better than all day on Zoom or not really being on Zoom. So, you know, I appreciate that. But again, you know, we're all parents. And I think, you know, we all have had a very long year of trying to find the right way forward. So no, I mean, I appreciate you sharing that because it's not, it's just not easy.
And, you know, this kind of had popped in my head, like, you know, with the special education, I don't know if their class sizes are smaller. I mean, the ones I think I've been in tend to be smaller in numbers. You know, is there a way to bring them back since they're already in a smaller capacity, you know, I mean?
They are, they're, they're.
They're all, all of them are back.
Well, they're back, but their schedule doesn't end in two and a half hours. Not except for a couple of classes are from eight to 12:30.
And that's to everyone that wanted it.
Right, everyone that wanted it, they, they, we have two autism programs that are a little bit different schedule. But they have been back for a longer amount of time.
And with the younger grades, like the K through three that have smaller class sizes, could we make that work maybe with them coming back at the same time? Or is it something that just needs to be across the board?
I think you have been talking about our families, Tracy, we have families that have children in the primary, interviewed in middle school.
Yeah, that's, that's my family, yes.
So unless you're a parent that has a flexible schedule that can stay home and take one in the morning, leave that trial there until two, take the other one in the PM, make sure McCaffrey's is on time because they're on a slightly different schedule. I think that without knowing if parents have that flexibility at home, that's a hard decision to make.
Well, and this is a lot to unpack. But hearing the two administrators tonight and in talk with just parents out and about is, I feel like the middle school should, that McCaffrey should be nearing our high school because there's this, of what their schedules. But I know that the high school, I believe they go Tuesday to Friday, eight to 12, 12:30. And I don't know all the logistics of it. However, middle school is just that, middle school preparing, you know, our, you know, tweens and teens for high school. And they're only getting two and a half hours of, you know, of instruction. And it's like, I, I'm torn as well. I want us back five days a week.
But keep in mind that the high school, they have about 50% of their students back, not 84%, which in the, the K through eight.
Well, I'm talking about seven to eighth grade.
But I've been, no, I'm saying you want to mirror the high school. And I'm just saying that high school is only back about 50%. So they can do the four, they have that four-hour block in the morning Tuesday through Friday.
Right, what's the enrollment, so we have 900?
At McCaffrey? I'm just curious, because that is a good point, I didn't know how many.
Well, I have a son, I have a 17-year-old, he's a junior and so.
It's about 80, well, that's about the same thing, which is 15%. So 85% of their kids are back on campus. So there's the rest, and there's the district actually, and I hadn't done that before. So we have 85%.
So less, lesser in-person at high school or still distance learning.
And adding to that, Tracy, and I think that's a good way to look at it, and you're right, it's in preparation for high school. What we do at McCaffrey. But keep in mind that scheduling for middle school and high school is a beast.
Oh, I do know that.
So the thought of trying, attempting, not even trying, just attempting to change a schedule, an entire master schedule for middle school. It would take days.
Yeah, it can't be done.
It's just, it's a lot, it's a lot. So with middle schools and high schools, right, the high school didn't change their schedule. And McCaffrey, I think, was very clear with us, if we change it, we can undo it. Yeah. Because it just doesn't work that easily when you're working with a master schedule. So the idea, I think, is yeah, that's what we should be doing. But the current situation would make it incredibly difficult to redo a master schedule for 21 days.
No, and I appreciate that because these are, you know, things that, you know, that need to be out there because these things, you know, I, I've had conversations with Ron, you know, when I, I went to go visit the cohort staff in the fall, just, and he's like, yeah, spreadsheet after spreadsheet after spreadsheet at scheduling, like trying to tell your kids back on campus. So I know the work that goes into it, but then, you know, you think, gosh, these kids are going into high school. And, you know, I ran into a friend of mine's daughter the first day of school and she's seventh grade, I'm like, how was your first day? And she was like, it's such a big campus, like her eyes were, you know, like huge. Because, you know, it's, she come from, you know, a smaller elementary school, yeah. And so these, all these kids. A year.
And I'm just going to throw it out because it's kind of positive, but my daughter's in the PM class. She does her independent work in the morning, she goes to school in the PM, she likes it. She's spending less, I mean, she gets her work done quickly. For her, she has more free time now and she's getting the classroom time. So she's getting to see a couple of friends. And, you know, she's, she, basically she's doing her lunch and her recess at home in the middle of the day. And, you know, by 10 o'clock, she's done with her work, the, the independent work. So, but she is getting up, she's on a regular schedule, you know, and even when I'm working though and I'm not facilitating it, she's pretty, you know, she's independent enough to be able to do that. But she is fifth grade, it would be much different if she were K through third or something, that would be far different. But she really is a, you know, she's liking it.
And me personally, I'm a fifth grader and an eighth grader. And I've been battling back and forth, you know, daily since the special board meeting. And I, I don't know about this, you know. And I, I'm just thinking, like, my fifth grader's excelling, he's A's and like one B and my eighth grader's excelling, like all As. Last time I checked, they're both adapted, they're both like, they've got the, the morning, they're in the AM program. They, when they come home, my eighth grader, he gets a little break, but then he has his two electives, his PE and he's in KDOG, so in, they log into those classes and then do what they need to do. They get their homework done, so, yeah, to me, it's, it's been a struggle because I don't think, man, I'd like to have them five days a week in school. But at the same time, I'm like, they're excelling right now, they've adapted to what's going on. And they've got a good support group that helps pick them up from school and do all that. Because I thought the same thing about the K3, like, oh, K3, there's only 20, 21 kids in a class. Then the whole, like, to me, the selling point is like, no kids got COVID, doing really good safety-wise and hate to make a judgment and then have that collapse on us. And then the big group with the big classes, you know, you get a sixth grade class that's got 32 kids in there or something. And then one kid brings it and we get an outbreak. I mean, I don't know if I really am comfortable making that decision. But at the same time, even, I pretty much on the, on the website every day, looking at the COVID cases. SAC County is pretty, kind of pretty much plateaued or pretty much sounds like we're going to be in the red until June 15th, the June 15th day when all the tears go away. Because it was kind of predicted that we'd be blood orange by now and it hasn't happened. So, yeah, it's, it's frustrating and it, it's kind of like, I, with the information I had received tonight, I feel a little more comfortable than I did two weeks ago.
You mentioned that you have been struggling with this for a while. We haven't stopped thinking about this since March 17th of last year. I mean, it really has been, everything that we do has been towards how do we get the children back? Because everything we do is on behalf of children. And any decision we make, we always think about, how does this impact the parents? How does it impact the community? How does it impact anything that we do? So it's, it was a hard decision even for us, but based on, on some of the research that we quickly did, we really decided that AMPM could really help support early reading the best. The children at the middle school will adjust. And those that are doing well will continue, you know, we can put them on any, they will do well.
Do, yeah.
And I do think that Sarah brought up a good point, we also have children that are struggling, but they were before the pandemic. And that's a whole different issue that we need to address to support those children that we've lost along the way and have really lost them to the distance learning. But it is hard, but again, Tracy, with your points, like, yeah, we still have 21 days, right? The things we can do in 21. But again, what is the impact on everything else and can we pull it off?
Well, I guess maybe I have just one more clarification, like, is it even possible? Like legally with the state and county health guidelines, like, is it possible to open up with our current, with it not being June 15th yet? I mean, I think that's something that's confusing to people as well.
To fully open it?
Yes, like if we said we want to go normal tomorrow.
We cannot.
Okay, and I think definitely to be clarified as well is, because it is confusing when you hear other districts are opening or this and that. We legally cannot.
We cannot. We cannot, and I don't know about the aspect of putting 60 kids on the buses right now, can we just do that, Lilith?
No, not with transportation. Well, even buses aside, but just classroom, could we put 32 sixth graders in one classroom right now?
On paper, nowhere else. You still have all the same social distancing and you're going to put 32 kids three feet apart in the classroom and not their ma, I mean, you know, Wes, what you said is just, you know, is true, is, you know, what we've been really diligent, everybody, families, students, staff. And I think it's because with the success with the safety and the health of our students is because we have low numbers and they, in the classroom. And they are more, you know, they're physically distant. So, yeah, just on paper, you could fit 32 kids three feet apart, that's the only place. Think of the, all the exits and the entry gates and, you know, the screenings and, you know, food and everybody on campus.
Where we're now managing that with half the students.
Yes.
And there's a lot that goes on with half the students to get through those gates and get to their classrooms. So now reimagine that with all of them coming.
And then let's just.
So it's just, I, I, we're getting there, that's the thing, it's like, it's, Cleo was saying, so badly we want more. Our staff wants more, it's just, I couldn't bring that recommendation to you in light of everything. As much as I, I mean, I work with such committed staff and, you know, again, just trying to come through for everyone to serve children.
Anybody else? Let's not then, I will move to approve item 202.193. Do I have a second to that motion?
Oh, my goodness.
Stacy, thank you.
Thank you, the motion comes from Tom Dela to approve item number 202193, seconded by Katie Reboit. Wes Cabel?
Aye.
Tracy Skinner?
Aye.
Grace Mollson?
Aye.
Thank you, the motion passes by zero.
It's, it's, it's been such a challenging year, but there is such hope with where we are right now. And I, I just again, thank you as our Board of Trustees that you continue to serve our, our school system and our community through your leadership. It's, there's just not been any easy board meeting. Not any easy board meeting and the public who've come forward to comment, you know, it's just because people can't. And we're all, you know, wanting to do the best we can, so thank you. Thank you, we will move forward and doing our, the best we can, I think again, it's going well, it's going. Thank you. We, we will move forward and, uh, doing our, the best we can. I think, again, it's, it's going well. It's going well. Thank you.
All right. Um, now moving on to item two zero two point one nine four. This is from board consideration of approval of resolution number twelve approving a site lease, a sublease, and construction services agreement relating to the Vernon Greer Elementary School HVAC upgrades and roof replacement.
Thank you. So SMB James Construction has just completed their pre-construction services here at Greer. And with that process, the last couple of months, they have evaluated the school site up and down, roofs, HVAC units, the portables. And they have provided for us a contract amount, the contract, full contractor scheduled of, uh, payments is at the very end of this packet for you. We are looking at about two point six million dollars for some work that you would like to do here at Greer. Um, about sixteen HVAC units will be replaced. We're looking at roof replacements on all the permanent buildings. A school-wide fire alarm replacement, exterior painting schoolwide, and then dry rot repairs on the portable. Um, how we will pay for this, um, we have a little over two point one million dollars in state facility funds. Those were the funds, the reimbursement for the Marengo Ranch hardship, um, project. We will use that. We will be using about six hundred thousand dollars of Esser three funds that can be used for HVAC upgrades. Um, we could also look at if we needed to, the work that we're doing on the portables is contin, is considered routine maintenance and repair, the painting and the dry rot. We could use our three percent funds for, uh, maintenance. We could also use some developer fees for the dry rot repair. That's about two hundred thousand dollars. And I think we could be able to cover it with just the state facility funds and some of the Esser funds that should be going to HVAC upgrades. Um, this will be if the board approves it. This will be our fifth least leased back project with SMB James Construction. They've been a great partner. Um, done some incredible work. They're excellent with, um, warranty callbacks. Um, they have stuck to their timelines, uh, they've stayed within budget. This is a strict timeline because it is during the summer. We want all this done before kids return in August. Um, they've already, they-
What's the projected start date then? Because my question is, does it overlap with the extended?
It does, yes. They will be starting as early, there's some work that they can do even in May when students are here. Um, they, they are going to, this BFLC will be closed come June, and parts of the multipurpose room will be closed. Um, they will be starting the roof repairs on these two big buildings. Uh, but they pretty much already have a, a diagram, we've met with Mrs. Semenich, the principal here, on what they will do. They know what classrooms will be used for summer program. Um, the teachers that will teach here in the summer will be able to stay in their classrooms. Um, and then they'll start their, all the rest of that in July.
What would they be doing with, like, library books, just if kids want?
Well, it's not inside here, it's exterior. Mm-hmm. It'll be very loud and somewhat dangerous because they will start roof repairs and HVAC on this building. So they don't want anybody working in here, but everything inside will stay the same. We just won't have staff or students in here after June fourth.
Would they check out books?
Yeah. We could take it, we can do that. We can work with Mrs. Semenich and get some books to a different location.
Yeah, or maybe another school, like, maybe go to.
Yes.
And the HVAC upgrades, those are, what is it, the MERV thirteen?
Yes, yes. They will have the MERV thirteen, and they will have new control systems that we can manage. Um, air quality, airflow, how hot, cold the classrooms are getting, um, that's all part of this. All the electrical, all the ductwork to upgrade to the new standards will be.
And those are the kind of things that Esther two.
Yes, that's why Esther two funds will be able to cover this.
Okay.
Press or, we'll use Esther three.
Oh, for three now.
We're up to three.
All right. Any other questions? Comments? All righty then, do I have a motion to approve item two zero two point one nine four?
I'll make a motion to approve two zero two point one nine four.
Thank you, Gracie. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you. The motion comes from Grace Molson to approve item number two one nine four, seconded by Tracy Skinner. Tom Silva?
Aye.
Wes Cagle?
Aye.
Casey Reboy?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes five zero.
You're reminding me. It always makes me laugh.
It's been a challenge, I'm glad. Okay, next item on the agenda is item two zero two point one nine five, and that is board consideration of approval of agreement between the Sacramento Metropolitan Air Quality Management District, SMA QM, and the Gulf Joint Union Elementary School District to purchase an electric bus and be fully reimbursed for the costs. That sounds good.
Yeah.
Tell us all about this.
Yes, I'll give a little background here, and we also have Carrie Gardner, our transportation supervisor, that will join us in case you have any specific questions. She's been working really hard on this contract, the agreement. So basically, what the SAC Air Quality Management Group is doing is they are trying to get older buses off the roads and replace them with cleaner electrical vehicles. And so with this program, we have to, um, salvage an older bus. A couple of years ago, the board did approve to, um, replace off our fleet, um, a nineteen ninety-four Thomas Diesel that had almost three hundred thousand miles on it. It is, uh, it's in our yard. We have not salvaged it yet, but we would give it over to the SAC Air Quality. And with that, they would reimburse us to purchase an electrical bus. And so the cost, the contract is in here for you, or the quote, the bus is about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars right off the top. The hybrid and zero emission truck and bus voucher incentive project pays two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars for that. They paid two hundred and twenty, and SMUDD pays seven thousand right off the top. We don't have to come up out of pocket for that. What we would have to, the district upfront cost would be two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, but it is fully reimbursable through this agreement. Um, a reimbursement should come within a one to two month period from the time that we purchased the bus. Um, so we think this is just a great way to get an electrical bus, cleaner air, um, and be fully reimbursed for it. The high school is also taking advantage of this, and they, yeah, they will be taking to their word as well. If they haven't already, they will get an electric bus as well. Um, our next step would be bringing to you, if this is approved, the infrastructure contract that we would have to put at the yard, um, to be able to charge, mm-hmm, charge the buses, but that is fully reimbursable too. So they're really making extra efforts to get cleaner buses out there. And I don't know, there, there's Carrie. Thank you, Carrie, for staying with us late tonight.
Good evening. How's everybody doing this evening?
Good.
Well, thank you.
So any specific questions on this? Yes.
Is there a limit to how many buses we can salvage and get?
Well, I, you know, I don't know. I, Carrie, there's, there's gotta be a limit since we only did one, because I know we have another bus that we could salvage.
There is a limit, um, because they're trying to share the funds that have been, um, set aside with all the other area districts. So we're lucky that we received contract for one bus this time. Uh, my plans are in the future that we will apply as, um, it opens up for applic, for the application process.
Next question. So the electric, uh, station, plug-in station, are you just gonna get, uh, one, uh, the one station that will plug in for both buses? For the high school and the, if the high school approves theirs, or will you try to get, uh, take ahead and try to get a multiple, like, one, like, another station or two?
I believe right now, like, Carrie, speak to that, but I believe right now, what's in the contract is just for two. The two buses that we would be getting, one for the high school and one for elementary. I don't know if you had any more feedback on that, Carrie, on how many infrastructures or electrical plugins, um, the old school to get?
Yes, um, we have pre-planned to be able to accommodate up to six buses for the infrastructure for charging, with hopes that we will be able to expand our electric fleet.
I have two questions, actually. The first one, because I'm looking at the specifications on the bus, and, and I'm just, for clarification, because the diagram, the picture shows a wheelchair lift and, and wheelchair capacity, but I didn't see, like, under the options or standard equipment. That's like on page four and five towards the end of this package. It's under the line, electric. So can you clarify that? I mean, does it come with a wheelchair lift?
It, yes, I'll let Carrie talk about that, but we, we will be able to hold forty-two passengers in seats, and there's three passengers in wheelchair capacity, but I'll let Carrie talk a little bit more about that.
Yes, the bus will come equipped with a wheelchair lift. The seating on the school bus will come with a variable rating so that we will be able to add and remove the seats on the buses, depending on what the needs are at the time for the district, as far as how many passengers do we need to transport in wheelchairs versus in seats.
Oh, okay, that's awesome. So then you have that flexibility.
Yes.
Then the next question, um, this, this is the question I always ask about electric buses. It says on here the range is a hundred and twenty-five miles. Now, I know at least one of our drivers in our district, because I asked her one time, how many miles a day do you drive? And she said a hundred and fifty, which, by the way, is a lot of miles behind the wheel of a bus. I've driven a bus before. So my question is, what's, I guess, how does that a hundred and twenty-five compare to the average for the district? Because I don't know if, if a hundred and fifty is an outlier, because I think the route might, like, take you all the way out to Ford and stuff, but, what is the average that our drivers drive in a day, and, and is this going to meet that need?
Yeah, we've talked about that. I'll let Carrie.
Absolutely. So I, um, our average daily mileage on a bus route is probably fifty to sixty miles a day. Um, the hundred and fifty mile route is absolutely one of those higher mileage routes. Of course, for, um, charging purposes, we would probably would not assign the electric bus to that route.
Yeah, definitely want to be using these buses for field trips or sporting events.
Yeah.
So you can get the slide park, but you can't get back.
Yeah, that wouldn't be good. Well, but I'm sure there'll be places to charge in other locations. Yeah.
Yeah, that's an interesting question. Do they use the same adapters as, 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 like, passenger vehicles in terms of charging, or is it a different?
I'm not pretty sure.
It's a different, is it a different kind of connection or?
Our work, our, our work, we have electric lifts, big old heavy lifts, they're electric now. And one of the things is they're quiet, so they had to put noise makers on them, because, yeah, otherwise, you, you don't hear them. They're that, they're that quiet. But, uh, yeah, because we have workers who have electric cars, and they're totally different.
They're not interchangeable, okay? So, so, so obviously, you wouldn't even know where you'd be able to stop and recharge if, if, yeah, they're required. Okay, um, that's the only question I have. Like I said, the range, I gotta admit, that's, that's much better than, than I know when I was at the A E C. They, uh, somebody there was, was, was showing off electric buses, and, and their range was fifty miles.
They really have evolved. When they first came out, it was much.
I'm still laughing. But, but a hundred and twenty-five miles, yeah, I think that's, that's, that's gonna fit most of our requirements, and that fits well within the average, okay? Yeah, and if the high school picks up one, and that's two buses in our fleet, that's, that's, it gives us even more flexibility. I think that's excellent. Any other questions or comments?
Your mechanics will have to have special training for the electric lift, some electric.
You know, I believe, I believe so, Carrie. Have we talked about that? Will the mechanics need some training?
Yes, the mechanics will receive specialized training upon delivery of the bus, as well as the drivers. It will change some of our processes with the bus drivers as well.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, then, if not, do I have a motion to approve item two zero two point one nine five?
I'll make a motion to approve two zero two one nine five.
Thank you, Wes. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you. The motion from Wes Cagle to approve item number two zero two one nine five, seconded by Tracy Skinner. Tom Silva?
Aye.
Grace Molson?
Aye.
Casey Reboy?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes five zero.
Thank you, and thank you, Carrie, for all your hard work on getting us this far for electric buses. It's exciting. You're the first one.
Thank you. I would love to be able to take the board for a tour in the new electric bus once we take delivery on it. We'll have to schedule something.
That would be awesome.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Hopefully not by then. Maybe not by then.
Maybe they can bail it on or something, huh, so we hear it.
Yeah. Be nice out, quiet those things, though. It is crazy.
Okay, next item then is, uh, agenda item two zero two point one nine six. And that is board consideration of approval of memorandum of understanding, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, summer school extended year program between the California School Employees Association and its Gulf Chapter number three six two, CSEA, and the Gulf Joint Union Elementary School District.
Okay, so actually, what this agreement does is that it works to maximize, um, our efforts involving, uh, to serve children with our classified staff, starting with instructional assistants whose contract year, um, ends sooner, sooner than what we want it to be. So in a voluntary way, uh, what this agreement does is, is it does extend an additional six days for instructional assistance, which will really help with reading instruction for our, our little ones. We really, um, appreciate, uh, being able to do that, you know, pending board approval of this. Um, the fiscal impact of that is approximately twenty thousand dollars, and it would be voluntary for instructional assistants to work those days. And then, um, again, for us to be able to extend, um, another three weeks of summer services, it not only takes, um, our, our teachers and principals to come forward, but it also takes our classified staff. So we, um, this agreement reflects that in a voluntary basis, uh, classified staff whose year has ended, um, could apply for positions that are needed and receive an additional seven dollars per hour. Um, it also includes, um, classified staff that will need to, um, maybe work longer than their eleven-month, um, contract, or employees that work twelve months, and it's gonna impact their workload, because they're gonna have to push other things off and to make it all go. Um, I have to tell you that, um, we now have one thousand three hundred and six students that are registered for summer school. We have, the registration is closed, but we are forming waiting lists right now, and I think that we really want to start posting next week for positions. So I want to share that, um, reaching this tentative agreement with our classified staff so quickly, um, is, is really appreciated. Um, and, and Lois, anything else that you would like to share on this agreement that, that you and Donna and I worked on with, uh, CSEA?
No, I, I think it definitely reflects, you know, and, you know, we need classified staff just as much as we need teachers to, you know, we need everybody to support the students. We have office staff, custodians, IAs, bilingual instructional assistants, and so, um, we're in the process of looking at, um, how many classified staff we will need at each school site based on the number of registrations. And so I think this values their, their extra efforts to come and, and work in June, when typically they are off. Um, and so, so far, we have a, a pretty good voluntary response right now of classified staff that would work the summer program.
Any questions? Comments? No? Okay, if not, do I have a motion to approve item two zero two point one nine six?
I'll make the motion to approve item two zero two point one nine six.
Thank you, Tracy. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Casey.
Thank you. The motion from Tracy Skinner to approve item number two zero two one nine six, seconded by Casey Reboy. Tom Silva?
Aye.
Wes Cagle?
Aye.
Grace Molson?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries five zero.
Okay, it is time. Do we have any other, uh, requests for public comments or topics or items that are not on the agenda?
We do not have any requests for public comment at this point.
Okay, uh, pending agenda items, uh, does the board have any other recommendations that are on here? Anything that you guys would like to look at or consider? And if that's it, then this meeting is now adjourned.